I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is 5:03 PM. And per usual, in our meetings, we can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll get going with our public hearing. And I'll make a motion just in a moment to open that. But before that, I wanted to let everyone know that we have two of our trustees who are doing this via Zoom as well as other speakers. And as Charlene, who's our village administrator, just said, there's lots of people who would like to make public comment tonight. So if you do make your public comment, and if you don't mind, it would be helpful to make some room for some other people to come in to make their comments. And the other thing I just wanted to say before we make a motion to open our public hearing is that we're of course here to listen. We're here to formulate our opinions. And what makes local government special and our community special is that we always have a high degree of civility. And while we may all not agree on the issues, we of course will make an effort to try to understand other people's perspectives and to give people the courtesy of their freedom of speech to express what they'd like. But I would encourage everybody to try to be as kind to their neighbors and fellow village residents and stakeholders as possible. And I think we'll have an enjoyable and productive and probably long meeting if we do that. But we're looking forward to hearing everyone's comments tonight. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to open our first public hearing. And that is the public hearing regarding Local Law 5-2022, the proposal to amend Village Code Chapter 73, Landscapers, and Chapter 78, nuisances. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I think what would make the most sense is to open this up to public comment. The only thing I wanted to say before that is we did form a leaf blower task force. And that was comprised of both environmental advocates as well as landscapers. And the group came up with some things that they agreed on and other things that they didn't agree on. But again, the law that we have drafted is just that. It is a draft. It is open to amendments. It is open to changes. And we hope to take into account all of the comments tonight in order to improve that law. And what I think might happen is I think we might have some improvements to this law. There's a chance that people might go home happy. There's a chance that people might go home feeling not satisfied. But our goal is to try to do something that makes the most sense for the village. So with that said, we have a long list of people that would like to speak. Charlene, is there a list of speakers in order?
I have a list of speakers as they signed up.
They did not indicate which meeting, so I'm going to just go through the list one by one. I also have about 47 communications to summarize and make part of the official record as well. But please note that if you come up here, you can speak into the microphone. So your comments will be recorded by our videographer. And please, your comments, please limit them to three minutes. What time you will give me a gentle reminder, okay? Okay, so Stephen Piper, 56 Hillwood Street.
That's not the beginning of the list.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, unfortunately, the pages went out numbered. Okay, we have Anton Borovina.
Part of the Hamptons and Steve Schneider as well.
Okay, so that's HOH. So I have Lane Brett Schneider. Are you in the Hamptons? Can I be right? 16th Lake Avenue.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Penelope Wright. I imagine that you're all familiar by now with the various competing arguments concerning gas-powered leaf blowers, whose two-stroke engines are being phased out worldwide because they are among the worst polluters out there. Not only do they pose serious health hazards for their operators, their low-frequency winds carry for a half a mile, diminishing beyond a doubt the quality of life for those who spend time outside in the village and even for many who spend their time inside as this noise permeates walls. I came tonight to let you know that the legislation you may vote on this evening is not acceptable to many of us in its current form because it would not take effect until October of 2024, more than two and a half years from now. Landscapers may argue that more time is needed to come up with blowers as powerful and efficient as the current ones. Although some say that the latest commercial electric blowers are more than up to the task, for the sake of argument, let's acknowledge that it might be possible that no electric leaf blowers may ever perform as efficiently as the current gas-powered ones do. This possibility should not, in our view, be the determining factor for when or even whether a ban is implemented. The jury may be out on gas versus electric, but there is no question that with our climate in jeopardy, carbon emissions need to be reduced now, a reality this board acknowledged a year ago when you took the forward-looking step of declaring a climate emergency in our village and promised to promote ecologically sound practices. And these actions would happen in the statement you adopted at emergency speed. I and others feel that although ideally a ban would happen now, a reasonable compromise would be to have a waiting period of no more than one year before the law is implemented, after which time electric leaf blowers would be permitted. Changing the implementation date may not be an easy call for you to make, but you've already demonstrated yourselves to be leaders in environmental initiatives. In fact, failing to make this change would, in our view, signal a serious misreading of how you were charged to act on our behalf when you were elected. You were not elected to listen to the loudest voices or even to abide by the recommendations of any task force you may have established. You were elected to learn the issues affecting us, discuss them among yourselves, and make informed and principled choices for our village and its residents. We are hopeful that each of you will carefully consider our request and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There is a name I really can't read on here, but it says in parentheses, McFarland. It's A-R-M, and then the rest of it's part of the Hamptons.
For the third, okay.
Okay, that's important.
That's for a third public hearing.
Mr. Judy Johnson.
I'm here for the on-hair hearing.
Okay. Don Quattontocha, Resormit Associates.
That would be me. Short and brief with this, the landscape company that we take care of owns properties out here in the village of Southampton, all the way out to East Hampton. And one of the primary reasons that I'm standing here is I just want to know if the board would ever allow us to run a generator to charge the batteries that we need for the electric blowers. The generator makes a little noise also. It is a gas-powered generator. But right now, the way the electric blow is set up, you're only getting maybe an hour and a half out of each battery. So that means multiple charges has to be done while we're doing a job. And at the same time, the costs of them are not exactly cheap. But will they do the job? As was mentioned, not as powerful as the gas blow. But I do think if the generator is allowed, I saw nothing in the law that we could not use that. They make, Honda actually makes a small generator that recharge batteries during the day. And it's not that loud. It really is not. It's very quiet. You probably, for one property or another, you wouldn't even hear it run. So that's, I just want to know the discussion, if that's going to be a problem if batteries charge, so we can continue to use and not call it a day and have the leaves get batteries charged. Some of these trucks today are also coming out with the outlet right in the truck. But to have a truck run is a lot more environmentally unfriendly than it is to have a small generator one. So I just want to put that out there to see if that's one of the possibilities that we can go.
Okay, thank you very much. We can check with our council. I don't see anything in our code that would prohibit a generator, but that's something that we could take into account.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you very much.
Alicia Ryder. Susan Burke. Thank you. 175 Eric Road.
My name is Susan Burke. I live at 175 Eric Road. I have a property with four tenths of an acre, a couple of really large trees, lots of leaves. And I'm here to make five points of a practical nature. One, we do not allow leaf blowers on our small property. And this is the thing that surprised me. It takes, it turns out, the same amount of time to rid our yard of leaves by raking it as it did when we allowed leaf blowers. And it costs the same amount of money, give or take a few dollars. There is no discernible efficiency saving or monetary saving by allowing this leaf blower technology to operate. We work at home. When we have a Zoom meeting, obviously, leaf blowers outside make that impossible. And there are many other reasons. If you're just trying to read a novel, a leaf blower makes it impossible. Second point. To my knowledge, today's leaf blowers with their immense power and their portability didn't exist before this century, before the 2000s, maybe 2004, for tens and scores and hundreds of years before this century, leaves were raked. And they were raked successfully. And as I mentioned before, I think for the most part, and this could go yard by yard, but we have enormous trees and leaves in our yard. It doesn't take any longer to rake them, and it's a lot quieter. And I raked leaves when I was a teenager at my home. And for the first several years that I lived on Eric Road, I raked all our leaves. I know it is possible for a normal human being to rake leaves. It isn't a terrible phenomenon. I understand there are probably, I was so glad to see landscapers here. I understand there are at least two issues from the perspective of the landscapers. One, I understand is that the garden crews don't like raking leaves. They'd rather, you know, wave around a really noisy leaf blower and blow the leaves into the air of the kingdom town, which is why it takes so long to rake the leaves in some of those yards because the leaves are blown all over the village. So, but I'm always sympathetic to the way a working person wants to work. But I think that the power, we as homeowners have the power of purchase of the service. If we purchase leaf raking, we can get leaf raking, and it will be a lot easier on everybody's nerves. Another issue I understand is that today's modern homeowner, educated as he is by the, is that my time? Okay, no. Educated as he is by the prevalence of leaf blower, who wants a pristine yard and for a lot of reasons, to remove every leaf from the yard is a silly goal. And we can go into that later. Secondly, lastly, electric leaf blowers are not the answer. If you've ever heard one, they are very obnoxious too. Whether their power comes from a generator or a long power cord, they are loud and obnoxious. As homeowners, we should request that our leaves be raked, and then we should ask our neighbors to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Rayner, 49, Reathley.
David Rayner, 49, Reathley. Yes, owner operated Rayner Landscaping for the last 35 years. In the village of Southampton. So she's great in horticulture. Yes, I've been in the village since I was a little kid. I used to rake leaves in my lawns, mow school drive, make a lot of money. But the fact is, real quick, I have three minutes. The Eric Road and all those places are small. They're estates, they're beautiful estates, but they're very close to each other. You open your door, like Susan said, and you can shake the hand with your neighbor. It's unfortunate. But in my business, I train my personnel to not overstand these leaf blowers. I try to educate them. Education is big, and licensing is big. You should license, there's a lot of incoming landscapers now that we don't know. We're all local guys, and they have to be educated on how to use the machines. And other people like my other, the estate section, they spend a lot of money. We all know, we all spend money, we all pay taxes, we all spend money. But they are paying, and they want the place to look good, and that's fine. And we provide that service. With that service, we need extra help to get the gardens manicured as they want them. But on these big estates, I can run a leaf blower in a backyard of one of my estates on Oxford Street. You cannot hear it out on the street. You just can't. They're so big and dense with a lot of landscaping, trees. You have to have a compromise. There's no way we can rake a three-acre lawn in an hour or two, maybe three days with 10 guys. Find me 10 people. I'm sure to help right now. I have no help. So I have no help. Nobody rakes leaves. Yes, I can rake leaves. I teach my guys, blow a little bit and rake the rest up, put it in a barrel, and take it off. But on a big estate, it's just impossible. You know, it's just, you can't do it. I did go through last summer with electric, it worked fine. The reason I say that is because we already had the estates cleaned up, manicured, ready to go. All we do is touch up an electric blower. But the fall and the spring, I need electric blower, period. Back in the days, we had these, they call them little goats. It was a gas-powered motor, and you push them, and they blow a lot of air. They're very intrusive, just as loud. This is back in the 70s. So what I'm saying is, we're going to work on this. But right now, I don't believe in banning everything. I love the law, the electric blow in the summertime, it's fine with me. But the fall, the spring, we have to compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thanks for your good words and your, as always, your service to the village. One thing I wish I actually said at the beginning of the public hearing is that we also would like to propose to amend Section 73-2, which is about licensing of landscapers. It's something I spoke to you about and Don Oney about. And that the companies that actually do things correctly, we want to reward them and not reward those who are not doing it correctly. And the proposal was actually to have a reciprocity with the town to use their licensing, because I'm sure you guys don't want to have, you know, three different licensing, Suffolk, Town, Village. It's more administrative work on the village too. So that's one thing that the task force did come up with as far as making sure that we value those who do things correctly. So we also could get your input on that. But I think I heard you correctly on that term. But thank you again.
Sheila Piper, 56. Dorothy Riley, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Dorothy Wright Riley. And I want to thank you for all the great work you all have done so far. It's really, really phenomenal. And I'm looking forward to the even greater work that you'll be doing. I have to say that I grew up on that lake there. And when I was a kid growing up there, we used to burn all of our leaves. And it was deemed that that was not in the best interest of the community. So we had to stop doing that. I speak from Drawdown East End, an environmental local organization, and the Carving Crew Project. And like to let you know that this January and a couple of Januaries ago, we hosted programs at the Southampton Art Center. And we got the largest gathering of people that they've ever had in the winter by people like us that are all concerned with the future of the earth. And that this is so important for us to do right now. We're also hoping to partner more with the village. We've got a fellow from Climate Action Now who would like to see if Southampton Village could be a model green village for the entire United States. And this is a wonderful way that this could fit in there, and we hope to be able to work with you on that. But waiting for 2024 is not in my vision. The earth needs us to do these things today. And all of us are going to be inconvenienced. Our landscapers right off the bat are inconvenienced here today. We're all going to be inconvenienced in different ways. And we need to look at those ways that we might be inconvenienced and start to make changes in our life now. I urge you to go ahead and change the bill that you've got now and enforce it more quickly. Thank you very much.
Dorothy, did we not have a fire marshal back then when you would burn the leaves? Do you have one now?
It was an issue. Oh, also, since my time is not done, I really think that we should check out these generators carefully. How can they be an asset or are they more profitable? And do these batteries get charged? Or are there enough stashed in your pocket so you don't have to use a generator? Some cases, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila Piper, 56.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sheila Piper. And I am here to express my surprise at the proposed legislation about leaf blowers. In May of 2021, the Southampton Village Board showed great leadership and initiative by passing the Declaration of Climate Emergency. This is a far-sighted, realistic resolution which recognizes the urgency of the climate crisis and specifies that, quote, "The village board is committing to make climate mitigation and the elimination of greenhouse gas emissions a guiding principle and objective." The current resolution, under consideration, makes it clear that the board recognizes all the harmful effects of gas-powered leaf blowers. Quoting from the resolution, it says, quote, "The operation of gas-powered leaf blowers unreasonably annoys, disturbs, injures, and endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, and safety of others within the village of Southampton," end quote. Operating such tools also endangers the planet because we've all read about and heard about in numerous hearings the noxious carbon monoxide, nitrous oxides, and hydrocarbons that are spewed into the atmosphere by these primitive combustion engines. If the village were following the mandate of its own resolution to make climate mitigation and the elimination of greenhouse gas emissions a guiding objective, it certainly would not be allowing these gas-powered leaf blowers to continue operating. Extensive hearings were held by this village on January 22nd, March 14th, and March 26th of 2019, prior to the seasonal ban that was enacted that April. Landscapers have now had three years in which they have been using electric blowers for part of the year. Three years to adjust. It is time to make the ban on gas-powered leaf blowers effective year-round. The resolution before us today seems to have bent over backwards for landscapers' demands, even allowing them a release from registration requirements in the village. The well-being of the citizens of the village seems to have taken a backseat. The village board's stated priorities seem to have been ignored. I urge this board to exercise crew leadership by following its own climate emergency resolution and by heeding the cries of residents for peace and well-being. Delaying enactment of a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers for two and a half years is too long. By your own admission, you find that gas-powered leaf blowers unreasonably annoy, disturb, injure, endanger the comfort, repose, health, peace, and safety of our people. Why would you allow all this to continue? Please make the effective date of this resolution sooner. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. Mr. Don Caponi, 46, Harvick Way. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Board of Trustees. What I just handed you is a packet from 30 village taxpayers and residents who are adamantly opposed to the proposed legislation. I'm a lifelong resident in Southampton Village, owner of numerous properties in the village and a business owner. I was happy to be invited to be a member of the Gas Leaf Blower Task Force, assembled by the deputy mayor earlier this year to address concerns and develop an immediate and long-term solution with regard to the use of gas leaf blowers for property maintenance. I'd also like to thank my fellow committee members for their time and effort. The committee, consisting of members from both sides of the debate, engaged in thoughtful and constructive dialogue. Ultimately, we agreed and crafted and submitted a balanced, realistic, and thoughtful proposed amendment to phase out the use of gas leaf blowers over time to the village attorney. Our proposal allows the time for the landscaping industry to again retool their fleet, to plan and budget for what will be another significant capital expenditure, especially in the light of current inflation and supply chain woes. We can't get the blowers right now. The proposal being presented for vote by the mayor and the trustees, however, does not represent the findings or recommendations of this committee. This came as a surprise to committee members as our final agreed-upon proposed legislation, which the village attorney, Ken Gray, who was present at all of our meetings, was supposed to present to the board, was to mutually agree to phase them out. This in no way, shape, or form is what's being proposed for the vote this evening. The community should know that the landscape industry as a whole is amiable to transitioning from gas-powered to electric or battery-powered leaf blowers. The transition, however, must be feasible and paced with technological improvements. For example, the sales force at my company drives Toyota Praises. They are efficient and effective for that job. The electric leaf blower, however, is not the power equivalent to the Praise. They are efficient and effective for small jobs, but they do not work on larger applications or seasonal cleanups. The technology simply isn't there yet, much in the same way that a hybrid dump truck has not been introduced to the market for us to use because it's not powerful enough yet. For this reason, it was a task force suggestion that we could reconvene in 2024, which is not too far off, to reassess the technology with hopes, and I want to make this point very clear, with hopes that the technological advancements would support 100% transmission, transition to electric or battery-powered leaf blowers. From a cost perspective to the property owner, the mayor and the trustees have not, to my knowledge, gave the landscape industry to assess the enormous cost increase that will burden the village residents and taxpayers for property maintenance should this proposal be implemented as written. What might have been an hour or two maintenance event will now be two or three times as long with equivalent additional costs and a lesser quality result. Perhaps the bigger issue at hand, directly contributing to the noise nuisance, is the issue of licensing. The village must implement stringent licensing requirements for all contractors working in Southampton Village. If enacted, we would experience a significant and immediate decrease in noise complaints, specifically as they relate to landscape maintenance. After-hours and weekend work would largely be eliminated, if not completely. Licensed and insured contractors cannot run profitable businesses paying overtime to cut grass. To offer an example, I have a neighbor. They're a very nice couple on the corner of Hill Street, and I'll leave the cross street out, but one of the main roads. Every Sunday, there's a pickup truck parked on their property, and a gentleman with a commercial-grade walk-behind mower, gas-powered backpack blower, and other related equipment perform service. This gentleman is neither licensed nor insured. By imposing license requirements, we will eliminate many of the noise and contractor-related. On behalf of the landscape industry, I ask for licensing and registration requirements in the village of Southampton and enforcement of the same where it's useless. This will level the playing field and reduce complaints stemming from illegal businesses that are not licensed and insured for performing services outside of the permitted work hours. Residents should not be precluded from the peaceful enjoyment of their properties. And just to speak on something that the gentleman mentioned earlier with Attorney Gray on the Zooms for this task force, you cannot outlaw the use of generators. That was in one of our dialogues, and he made it perfectly clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don.
And thank you for your work on the task force as well, Don.
That's right. I was remiss to thank you and Wayne and Paige and Christian Pico for their help on the task force. I'll summarize things at the end, but I did want to mention that in our proposed budget, we did increase the budget for enforcement by $30,000. And we're actually in talks in addition with the town to help us with a shared service agreement, have them assist our current in-house co-enforcement to provide, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week enforcement. And enforcement's a good quality of life initiative. And then our acting chief, her talent has been a big help. And she's discussed with our crew unit, our community response unit, actually having more boots on the ground to address some more quality of life issues. So we have taken those enforcement considerations seriously, and we hope to enact them over the spring and summer. But thank you again, Don.
Just be aware, the town doesn't enforce their own codes. Don't expect me to come in here and do it.
Maybe teach him a thing or two.
Stephen Piper, 56.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Piper, and I live at 56 Hill Street here in the village. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support the intention of the proposed amendment of Village Code 78 for prohibiting gasoline-powered leaf blowers for the stated reasons of noise pollution, public health, and safety. And I thank the recent task force composed of citizens on both sides of this issue for coming up with this compromise, a compromise that continues to allow the use of leaf blowers that are powered by electricity and battery. However, I can find no written record, nor have I heard of any reasons given as to why this prohibition will not go into effect for another 31 months. That is 31 more months of noise pollution and assaults on the health and safety of everyone concerned. This delay and implication of this law to a time when possibly none of the village trustees who are charged with deciding this issue will still be in office strikes me as not as a compromise, but as an illogical evasion of your responsibility. Illogical because the detrimental effects of gas-powered leaf blowers exist now and will exist for the next 31 months. An invasion of your responsibility because you should be accountable for your vote when it is cast. Those who oppose battery-powered blowers counsel patience because they say that the technology is still developing. But the village trustees were given a demonstration of the viability of battery-powered machinery back in April of 2019 when the first seasonal ban on gas blowers was discussed and affirmed. Also, if the technology does improve over the next 31 months, who is to say that the new improved battery units won't be purposely made to fit into the machinery of today? I am very glad that the many forms of pollution that small gas-powered internal combustion engines bring to our neighborhood will be a thing of the past. I only ask you that you decide to protect our health, safety, and peace and quiet sooner than two and a half years from now.
Thank you. Thank you.
David Hart, 35 Hill Street.
Well, my name is David Hart. I'm a, I live at 35 Hill Street. I'm a retired physician and ardent leaf breaker. Southampton Village Board was very courageous and forward-thinking last night when they adopted the Declaration of Climate Emergency in the village of Southampton. Among other important points, the resolution states "The Southampton Village Board recognizes the urgent need to combat climate change by setting goals and developing specific steps for local climate mitigation." The village's total ban on jet-gas-powered leaf blowers should be enacted without further delay. The environmental noise and health issues are clear and compelling. There's no reason to endure three more fall cleanup seasons with gas blowers. Landscaping companies and homeowners have had ample time to acquire electrical equipment for the existing summer ban. Independent agencies have shown that electric leaf blowers are practical, cheaper in the long run, and more environmentally sound. It would most serve our community if those landscape companies that are fighting the ban would instead embrace creative solutions to make our current environmental disaster better. It would make sense if those who make a living from nature would leave the initiative to educate their clients and save our precious resources. Equally important to the legislation is active enforcement. It appears that the proposal does away with the new requirement for landscape companies to be identified and certified. It does not clarify that individual homeowners are included in the ban, and it does not specify how the ban will be enforced or what penalties will be imposed. The proposal as written is confusing, contradictory, and must not be adopted without extensive revision and transparency. The village board must recognize that the vast majority of village residents are in favor of this ban. As elected officials, they should see the importance of this issue to the village board.
Thank you very much.
Susan, Susan Brun. Hi, I'm Susan Brun, and I'm one more voice to support the ban earlier than two and a half years from now. Environmentally, it's recognized as, as well as just... And you guys have an opportunity to take a baby step in trying to help the community and others acknowledge that we really need to do something about climate. A lot of people have said more specific things, but I'm just adding my voice to it.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Rob Coburn, 345 Hill Street. Thank you. I'm Rob Coburn, 345 Hill Street. Wanted to make a couple of points. It was said earlier that electric blowers are as loud as gas blowers. It's not true. Electric blowers are about 1/8 as loud as a gas blower. Decibel scale is a logarithmic scale, and at 65 to 70 decibels, that's about 1/8 as loud as 95, 400. So just wanted to clarify that. Because I believe generally in the direction of this law, I support the limitation eventual phasing out of gas blowers. But I think the board should remove any references to electric blowers from the proposed legislation. We've got a noise ordinance that covers it. As I mentioned, they are significantly less loud. 250 to 300 of our fellow village residents have tennis courts. If anyone's played on tennis court with sticks and leaves, I know this is a privileged problem, but a lot of your neighbors have invested. You can't play on the wood with wet leaves and with sticks. Takes an hour and a half to two hours to sweep it. So that's during the summer months, because I know there's been some talk that leaves don't fall except in the fall. It's just not true. The other thing I guess I'd like to point out is for those who say that leaving the tennis courts, you decide you can just rake and sweep after landscaping service. I've done some quick math. I'm sure I'm off a little bit. Tried to be fair. But I think it would require about the, if you ask people to rake clippings and other things or sweep the master lawn service, add about 2,000 or more additional hours, man-hour of the week of landscaping work in the village. That's equivalent on its own of 12 to 15 full-time crews. That's more traffic, more trucks parked on the side of the road, more trucks idling as they try to leave at the end of the day. And if we're concerned about environmental issues, come with me on Hill Street and sit with traffic stalled in front of your house for two hours every evening. So I think the gains we get from restriction of blowers may be offset by some of the unintended consequences of the traffic they created if we don't allow at least electric blowers to continue to be used.
Thank you, Rob.
On March 18th, it was a beautiful day. It was a spring day, and my wife and I decided to go to Morton Wildlife Sanctuary just to enjoy the beauty of the day and nature. And when you park, there's a sign that says mileage. I mean, the walking distance to each place that you can hike to. And we hiked to, we walked to Jessup Point. And it says 1.1 mile. So we did that long. We were enjoying being there. And then after a while, we start to hear this loud noise that sounded like it could have been a plane, it could have been a boat. Except it wasn't moving. It wasn't going away. It was constant. Well, we started walking back to the parking lot. It was the leaf blowers cleaning up the property alongside the sanctuary. There are mornings when I'm awake, awaking at 7:30 in the morning with leaf blowers cleaning a property across the road from me, next to me. And even on Sunday mornings, I mean, there's no respite. So my complaint is that noise pollution is a health problem. It's toxic to our health, and it's toxic to our environment. This talks to our well-being and our quality of life. So I propose and advocate that something be done about this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Williams, 13 Fresh.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. This is going to be really quick. I understand gas blowers are going to go. That's the way it is. I think we're in a very slippery slope here. It could just as easily come down to battery-operated blowers being taken out next. And the industry is more than willing to change with the times and what have you. This is really close to completely eliminating them to a... Thank you very much. I give my time to anyone else in the industry who wants to have it.
Thank you very much.
Wayne Switko, 54 Morton Drive.
I'm building a mariner trial. So I was on the Blower CAF Sports Advisory, and thank you for allowing me to be on it. Basically, everything that Don and I spoke from our side was really not heard in this ban, in this law. We talked about, you have to, you did say, starts talking about enforcing things and licensing and making sure everybody's licensed and insured and all that. So when you do get rid of cast blowers, we do see that in the future, Don, and I agree with that, that we are not competing against people who do not have insurance and things like that, who can come in and bid a job lower than us because they're not playing on the same playing field. We also did not talk about an electric blower ban at all. And I think most landscapers will agree. Getting rid of grass clippings now is starting to become impossible. So when we mulch lawns or we dump bag lawns, we need an electric blower in the summer to blow off these lawns, the clumpage, to get us, like this gentleman said, to get us out of the village quicker, off properties quicker, and make hopefully village residents' lives more accommodating for everybody. What we also talked about was the blower ban when we can have an effective end date. And Don and I spoke about it, and we said we show the powers of the different blowers, and we'd like to reconvene about effective end date. We don't even know if we can get enough electric blowers for our industry right now, batteries and all that. There's a supply shortage. So I think everything that came from our side in this discussion was not heard on our side. We do see the future coming, but we need some time to get supplies, to get more blowers and everything on my mind. So thank you.
Thank you.
John Bennett, 60 Hill Street.
Thank you. I'm tired of being brief. The way I read the law, it's, would say, and I understand, I think you should give time to the industry to phase out their gas blowers. But the way I read the, there's a ban, I would object to any ban on electric blowers after, other than daily time limits. The way I read the law says after October 2024, you're limiting electric blowers only for seasonal cleanups. And I don't see any need for that. I think it's contrary, I think it's anti-industry, and I think it's anti... By the way, I don't know what, people say everybody's in favor of the ban. I don't see any evidence for that. I see a lot of people here that are very concerned about this. It's an unnecessary intrusion. Just want, so I would object to, I mean, phase out the gas blowers, but you should be able to use these electric blowers anytime, with, of course, limitations in the morning and the evening. I also suggest that you don't pass anything this evening because you have heard a lot of testimony. And if you pass anything this evening, it's pretty, would be pretty obvious proof that we didn't take into account what was being said, and you had a pre-determination as to what you were going to do. And then finally, I just, I keep on hearing about this, this climate emergency resolution. There should be no mistake about this. This village climate resolution is nothing other than a prerogatory resolution, which means it has no force of law. It's would be, and it doesn't bind you to any course of action. That would be illegal under both the municipal home rule law and the town, and the New York State village law. So it doesn't, it's essentially meaningless, other than a sentiment. I sort of look at it as maybe like a secular apostles creed for a new religion perhaps, but it doesn't have any binding effect whatsoever on you. So when people tell that, you have to go through very specific hearings, public hearing on specific laws. Maybe a nice sentiment, but that's about it. And we seem to get along with the electric blowers. I don't think you need to limit them, other than to, of course, not be too early in the morning or too late in the evening. Thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The only thing I would add is, is obviously you're correct about the resolution regarding the climate emergency, but it does create a sense of urgency for us to have a climate action plan to make sure we're using...
Yeah, I know. It has absolutely, you know, binding effect on the law. Zero. Nothing. It didn't, it didn't take place pursuant to proper legislative procedure under the municipal home rule law or the village law. It's not specific. It's maybe a nice sentiment, but it doesn't bind you to any course of action. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Rich Spurber?
Yes. I thank you for the opportunity. I'm Rob Ritzberger from East Hampton. I served on the board in East Hampton. And as Mr. Mahoney said, you know, the thing with the blowers, it'll go about, almost about $1,000 per blower for a company, and there was a big shortage last year. There's also been some talk about the batteries, and they seem giving off radiation. So I don't know what the health, the long-term health effects are going to be for people using those. East Hampton, we came to a happy medium where we had certain hours that we were allowed to use a blower. Would seem to work fine. I agree with Mr. Rayner. I think education is a big, an important thing with these growers. People should be taught how to use them properly. The biggest problem we see is you have four guys blowing four feet high piles of leaves across the lawn instead of putting it on a cart and saving time. And, you know, the issue as far as getting help also was a problem. So I think you're heading in the direction of making the people in the village of Southampton have to spend a lot of extra money to handraise properties. So and a lot of the other points that we're going to agree with. So I'm in favor, but I think you really should look from the standpoint of limiting the amount of time and the seasons. So thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Lisa Bass? Lisa Bass? 20 Pelletro, correct?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Lisa Bass, and I own 20 Pelletro Street in Southampton. I own 0.16 of an acre. And I just believe that it is my right to choose within the law that is presented already whether or not I want to rake or hire my landscaper to do the leaf blowing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa Bass.
Sally Van Allen, 49 Hill Street, North Main Street.
I'm a village resident, and I also had a landscape company. So I'm very sympathetic to how hard it is to run a landscape company. I had something with a childhood friend called Real Quiet Mowers. And we actually used real R-E-E-L mowers. We didn't expect anybody else in the landscape industry to switch over. We thought it was a nice idea. We also raked. We did have two battery-powered blowers, which we used on occasion. We did favor raking. But we too had to navigate around the ivy growing around the swimming pool. So I understand that issue. But I do think we owe it to our community to bring a little more silence and a little more sensitivity to the environment. And I'm very sympathetic to, we had to leave the industry because the insurance companies had not caught up with two women of a certain age pushing real mowers and loading it in the back of her Jeep. Because the industry, the insurance industry, said you're landscaping. So we had to pay the same rates you would pay if you had a fleet of gas mowers. Large wings that would spread. They couldn't, they didn't understand their laws. So we were not able to continue though we wanted to. The, as a resident, I live here. And my next-door neighbor, their last neighbor comes at five o'clock on Fridays. And you're like, oh my. And even though it's legal for them to keep making that noise until seven, it is traumatic as a resident. And you're like, oh my, and even though it's legal for them to keep making that noise until seven, it is traumatic as a resident. But I also live in the village and I'd like to offer, I have two outdoor outlets. And through prior arrangement, I'd be happy to let anybody plug in whatever equipment they have anytime they like. But thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Juan Carlos Dion? Dion? Juan Carlos?
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm just here to, on behalf of all landscapers. I grew up here. I went to high school here and ever since, I've been working here as a manager. It took me a long time to get my tools until these days. Three years ago, they stole my equipment. I have to start all over. They stole over fifteen thousand dollars worth of equipment. If you're passing this law, so I'm just catching up right now. And then now you're telling us that within a year, we have to upgrade, that's more time, right? So it's not fair for me. I understand I'm, I'm up to, you know, change. I have no problem with that. But you cannot say it doesn't go in my mind that I'm going to go rake, you know, forever, all day long with my guys. I'm going to have blisters. What about that? You know, what about myself? You don't want to hear anything, but you don't think about me? So that's all I've got to say. You know, from that point of view, I understand you worry about the noise, this and that. But a lot of people hear it's construction. You hear all the cement trucks running, waiting for the cement to run the foundation. You hear the generators going for the, like the carpenters, you know, so that they can use their nail guns. What about that? So if we're going to talk about green, but if you really want to talk about the environment, then we have to talk about all that stuff. Not just the leaf blower, the leaf grower. Once you pass this law, then what are you going to go next to? Clippers, trimmers, mowers. So what am I going to do? Quit? Get a job? So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario Lopez? Mario Lopez? Wayne? Mario Lopez? Is he up there, Don?
I don't know. We're going to yell around the corner. It seems like it's
Okay, Mark. Answer, answer Andy.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. An easy job sitting in those seats. I understand that. I've heard a lot of stuff that I, I was going to prepare a statement, but I decided not to. I wanted to hear what people had to say and then react to it. Number one, I completely empathize with, with, you know, the issues that blowers do cause. I've been on vacation. I know what, I have neighbors. I know what it is when someone's using a blower at late hours. But I also know what it is to grow up here. And I heard Dot talk about, you know, burning leaves. I do remember that as well. To my dad and I, we probably have about a hundred and forty years of landscaping in the village. I've seen a lot. So I've been doing it my entire life. I'm privileged to have a son who's now a fourth generation. So I do give a damn about the future. And I have solar power in my house. My son and I have invested thousands of dollars and lots of hours going to seminars and workshops on native plantings, pollinator gardens, all the stuff we're talking about. We've, we've invested in that time. We've invested in that, all of that. There is a little bit of a disconnect though in the village. And the disconnect is not even so much landscapers and residents. It's residents here and it's residents there. And, you know, I did all this, we did all this stuff to, you know, create buffer zones by the lake. Reduce fertilization programs, not pick up your, your grass clippings. Offered to do a lot of these things. And then there's a collective drone from, not from Harret Row, the Hove Street, but from Ox pasture and Meadow Lane and Grape Plains. And these neighborhoods, they don't care. They say they do. They want it. They've been my clients for a long time. I love them. I give them what they want. They want green grass that is clean. And I had to put three kids through college. I have a son who has to make a living here now. He has a house with a high mortgage. I, I, I think that we really have to think long and hard before we really pinch an industry because it is going to be a tremendous pinch, both financially and of course in labor. And I'll leave this spot, this last note on this whole, the battery thing for the gas. And I get it. I hate the gas blowers myself. But I think everyone needs to think about, because I know in ten, fifteen, twenty years, my son or my grandson is going to be in a meeting like this and they're going to be discussing banning batteries because they're mining the bottom of the ocean for lithium and, you know, all the products that are going to be needed to make batteries. So everyone understands the need for green. I have two grandsons. I want them to be in a world where they can survive. But all the progressive movements in this country right now, they're, they're great. But application, enforcement, these things are not high word. These are real things you have to do. So we can make laws, we can put all this stuff together, but at some point, Angel is not going to be able to go around this whole village seeing who has a blower and who doesn't have a blower. The poor guy's not going to be able to last. So I get the whole thing. I appreciate it. I think we all need to get there someday. But these sweeping bans and without any disregard, with all disregard to what it's going to mean for an industry that, by the way, is one of the key economic drivers in this community. The east end, horticulture in the east end, when you start stacking up industry, I would put us up with anyone. We kill your delis, we kill your gas stations, we kill your mechanic shops, your local vendors. We are a key, key economic part of this community. And we are constantly in the eyeballs as the band. And I've had enough. Thank you.
Mark, would you mind a quick question for this? Sure. Well, you've seen the law and I'm just curious, is there anything you'd like to see changed here? Or is there any, you know, you hear all the sides and you can clearly
You know what, Jesse, I'll be honest with you. This is a really hard one. It's a hard one for you. It's a hard one for us. It's a hard one for them because there is a real issue. I get it. I, I, you know, someone mentioned it before. Seeing five or six guys in a circle with a blower making a big pile of leaves into a bigger pile of leaves is the silliest thing on the planet. Forget it. Education is a huge part of this. If you're going to, you know, I believe, and I have a home improvement license in this town, like most of the people in this room. But, you know, there needs to be education. I think this needs to be more of a refined process to get a license. I think you should have to go through some sort of educational program where you actually see a video or you've actually been to a class that shows you how to use this equipment properly and efficiently. So it's not an eight-hour drone of blowers. We, we show up on your job at eight o'clock. We leave at four thirty. Sometimes in the middle of a busy season, we got to work a little later. You'll never see any of my people blowing your lawn at seven o'clock on a Sunday or at five thirty in the morning. Those people aren't landscapers. They're not here. They don't even know anything about this. And that's what's going to happen. You're going to put a law in effect and people are going to roll into town with their trailers and their blowers and their mowers. And they're going to just go about their business. And, and then it's going to be on you to chase them around. And good luck. I think you're going to be in for a pretty, a pretty rough go. So I know you mentioned your thirty thousand dollars set aside. Doesn't seem like a lot of money when you, when you consider the size of the community and how many people are going to be doing it. So I, I get it. I, I think, you know, we all know that they're, they're not good. But it's amazing how many guys like to use them. I don't like to use them, but I think the most important part is education. The licensing and, and then a, some sort of phase out that seems to make sense. I understand there, I heard, well, it was enacted in two thousand nineteen. Well, in all due respect, the world between two thousand and nineteen and today is a lot different. And a lot of people are busy doing a lot of other things, though they're worried about blowers. Two or three years. So we're all trying to get acclimated again. We're all trying to get back on the theme. And so the idea that three years ago, this shouldn't have been started, considering the pandemic, considering that you're now seeing people in person for the first time. We all had to wait for stuff. So now this is a little bit of a delay from what first started in two thousand nineteen, which I was part of. So I, I, I understand the need to do it and the climate change and all that. Like I said, I got grandchildren. I, I care about it as much as anybody. But we need to have a comprehensive plan that phases us in and, because I don't think the stuff is going to be available to us. I think if every landscaper went out here right now, went out and ordered ten blowers apiece, they'd tell you, we'll see you in two years, maybe. So just understand all those issues. Those are real issues for companies that are now paying five dollars an hour for gas. Who are now paying people thirty dollars an hour to cut your grass. You're, you know, I hear, oh, you're charging this, you're charging that. People aren't working for fifteen dollars an hour anymore. They can't live. So you pay somebody thirty, thirty-five dollars an hour. You put on all the insurance that come with that. You put them in a seventy thousand dollar truck with twenty thousand dollar lawn mowers and all the stuff that goes with it. My God, it's, it, you're asking a lot out of an industry that is really struggling at times. So it's a seasonal business. We have to make a living on eight, nine months, ten months, you know. So again, I, as a person in this industry, I get it. I want to see them go away. But just think long and hard about the impact on the industry and also think long and hard on what this community really says and does. Because it's not always the same. Thank you.
Michael Messio?
Thank you. I'm a, I've lived in Manhattan for about twenty-five years, not a local. I grew up in Amityville. But I've been living in Southhold for about sixteen years. And it's a little different over there. A lot of people take care of their own properties. So it is noisy, but the noise is scattered in certain areas, you know. Neighbor might mow the lawn at eight o'clock at night. My other neighbor mows his lawn in the middle of the day. You're at work. So the noise is spread out. We live in a beautiful place here, but with beauty and wealth comes issues. So most people aren't here. They have these magnificent estates. And like everyone said, they want high quality. So that's a problem. It's a challenge. First, I'd like to commend the village of Southampton in creating the local law regarding electric leaf blowers in the current specified dates. We, as an industry, recognize the benefits of electric at times, the reality of change in our world and in our industry. What we need time, what we need is time for the industry to become more advanced with electric. For our companies to build up capital so that we can invest in the electric equipment when it becomes available. What I ask for the village is to focus currently on a more obvious issue, which is the unlicensed service providers. By focusing on this, you will be able to thin out inexperienced workers who don't have the education on how to run equipment and reduce noise and traffic seven days a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lane Fagan? Lane Fagan?
No, I'm calling Lane Fagan. Uh, I'll just take a minute. We've been living under the duress of leaf blowers for years. It's hard to even go outside during summertime. We're from borders from north, from north, south, east, west. Uh, we wake up in the morning, we hear, hear the blowers and we know it. Then we hear it from the neighbor on the left, then the right. And our answer to this was to go out and buy an electric leaf blower and provide the battery packs for our landscapers. He's been very happy with that. He comes to our house and uses our equipment and everything's fine. Maybe everyone should be thinking not of hurting the landscapers, but asking the property owner to chip in and support the electric blowers. Maybe they could get a tax write-off for providing the, the landscapers. You know, but I think we have to think out of the box and come up with a solution that's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Judy Maceless? Oh, thank you. Joey Anhale?
I'm signed up for the A-7.
Okay. Mackie Pitter?
Good evening. I'm Mackie Pitter from Water Street. And I'm calling on you, Mayor Warren, tonight to take you to leadership in the environment. Quite a number of years ago, Mayor Epley took a very strong stand, one of the toughest in the whole United States, on the plastic bag thing. Many people didn't like that. Everyone has followed him. The state of New York, when he did it, were two towns in the whole eastern part of the United States from Maine to Florida. Mayor Irving then came in and he brought in a leaf blower when no one else had it. Now, everybody on the eastern is following. It was passed last week, as you know, on Tuesday night by the cap. And now Mayor Warren, I'm asking you to take the lead in banning leaf blowers. And people will be following. You, you know they will, because around the nation they are. And just before I address the legislation itself, I want to talk about my own personal experience. A thing that constantly surprises me in landscapers, I live right in the village. All the houses are right on top of each other. So I see crackly all these people all summer long on my street. I'm retired, so I'm home, so I actually watch what's actually going on. What, they already had to for three years now have these leaf blowers. They're talking about how it's going to cost them a fortune. That was a good argument for the town because the town didn't have it. But you all were supposed to have it. So there's no reason why you don't have it now. I don't know what you did with it. They, when, it, it came up the very same argument in the village because people didn't have it, even though you put a lot of lead into the legislation. There still was time. So they came to us and said, we're ordering them from every company we know and we can't get them because nobody had done it. And, and, and so he, the mayor said, yeah, you can have more time. You know, let us know, show us who you're ordering, tell us when they're going to come in and we'll give you a little more time. And, and that similar thing happened. We did that over and over again with the plastic bag. You don't want to find anybody. You don't want to put anybody out of business. You just want to clean up the environment. We're all in this together. They're talking about all this blowing that needs to be done. What you're supposed to be doing, every environmentalist will tell you, is you're supposed to mulch your grass. You're not supposed to take it anywhere. You're not supposed to fill up the dumps and take all that time and all that energy and say how much time it takes. You're supposed to mulch it, leave it on the grass and it becomes fertilizer. You're supposed to do the same thing with the leaves in the fall, is what they ask you to do. And it really works. We do it. And, and we've always done. We don't use fertilizer. That's what we do. We mulch everything and it actually looks good. And it's healthy and it's environmentally sound. And all of you can do that too. And I agree that you need to help with the education in the environment because you're all the people who know and we really do care about it. And you talk, this gentleman over here, how we didn't care about your health. That's one of the main reasons for this. It's in your ear. You are breathing in your mouth. You are shaking that equipment on your back, doing damage to bones. We really do care about that. Don't think that this is not about caring about the workers. They're at the top of the list. We really do care about that. Don't think that this is not about caring about the workers. They're at the top of the list. Be caring about this. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Cindy Mankinoff? Thank you. Let's just start by saying I'm not here on behalf of the town. I'm here as a concerned citizen and somebody that has been following this for a very long time. I grew up in the village of Southampton, on Leighton Avenue. And as we went through the public hearings on the town level, we heard most of the residents that came actually to speak in favor of the legislation were from the village of Southampton, which I found kind of odd, because they had had the restrictions that we were looking at in place for three years. So the issue is, there's an eight percent enforcement rate on this. So to double down on something that you already cannot enforce is futile. Well, I said this at the town level. Landscapers have never said, we don't want to use electric. We don't want to use battery operated. We want our gas blowers till the end of time. What they have said over time and time again is, we understand that this is where it's going. We understand that this is where we want to be. This is where you want to be. What they're saying is the equipment isn't there yet. And when you say you bought the equipment three years ago, the equipment you bought three years ago is not the equipment that can do the job of spring and fall. It's fine for, you know, little bits here and there, but the equipment is still not there. And when Don and Wayne were on the task force, and they brought this forward, and they said, you know, let's not say we're going to have a full ban in 2024, not knowing if the equipment is going to be there at that time either, it makes sense, right? You can't say you're going to ban something until you know that there is something that will do its job in its place. I grew up in this village, and I've heard over and over again in the past twenty years, I don't know why, but it's gotten so loud. I can't hear myself think. It's just gotten out of control. And I went back on the town GIS, and I looked, and I started off where I lived, and I went to all my friends' houses. And I got through about twenty homes before I realized, none of those families live here anymore. All those properties are owned by LLCs. They're all four to five thousand square foot, six-bedroom, five-and-a-half-bed bathroom houses on four thousand, on eleven thousand square foot blocks with a pool house and a pool. There's no more vegetated bunkers in the village of Southampton. You can't screen yourself from noise from your neighbor, because they're living on top of you. You know, this isn't a noise problem. This is an overdevelopment problem. And, you know, there was a, there was a, you know, there was a thing here, and, and it's, it's now beyond leaf blowers for me as a legislator. It's about how things are done by government. And in the town level, we had a survey that went out, and individuals were told that they're, they were going to be written into the public hearing record. They never were. And I still haven't seen the results of that survey until we voted on it. I had to find out, after being asked to have an informal discussions on leaf blowers, that I had been put on a resolution and put on a task force for the village of Southampton. And I said, that's odd. I agreed to an informal conversation, not to be on a task force. So when I heard that Don, Wayne were on, and I said, okay, it's in good hands. Those guys are, you know, they know what they're talking about. So when the legislation came by and I saw it, I called Don, and I called Wayne, and I said, don't even tell if you guys agreed to this. And they said, absolutely not. This is nothing that we agreed to. So you have, you have an industry that wants to work with you, that wants to do the right thing, that wants to have a conversation. But when you open that conversation and then you shut it down by doing the exact opposite of what you agreed with them to do, and by the way, I've tried to get minutes of those meetings. I've tried to get recordings of those minutes, meetings. There's nothing. So it's their word against the other side. That's not right. They should have never been put in that position. And you have, you have an industry that's willing to work with you. I am willing, on the town level, to sponsor leaf blower training sessions. I have no problem with that at all. I, I see packets here who would be willing more than willing to do it. I know we're working on licensing, and we're working, we'd love to work with you on making sure that we enforce both the licenses. And let's start there, because to say that you're going to ban something at a certain time period when you don't know if the equipment is going to be even available or up to specs of what's needed, it's a problem. So thank you for your time.
Ben Schneider?
I'm here for this one.
I have Kimberly Allen and, oh, on Zoom. I think Kimberly Allen. She's very joey. She's HOH. And Leslie Speeds. Leslie Speeds and Kate's HOH. Um, Kat, can you?
Thank you, dear.
Kat, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, and it would be on the leaf blowers at this point. No hands.
We have leaf boxes. I'll be great.
Hi, Willie, you're in. If you could please unmute and start your camera. There you go.
Hello?
Hi, well, I'm back. I'm going to turn your volume up first. Okay, try again. Mr. Fox?
Hello?
Hi.
Hello.
Mr. Fox, you have three minutes.
Mr. Fox, you're either on mute or your Wi-Fi is a little problematic. Kat, why don't we maybe go with another speaker? Mr. Fox said, we're, we're going to go with another speaker, but in the next three minutes, perhaps you can check your Wi-Fi and just check your, your Zoom, and then we can let you back in, because we're having a hard time hearing you right now. I still, Carol, raise your hand to the public comment.
I'm Carol Reed Bennett. I just want to make sure the board has eight letters in opposition to legislation as drafted. It's not an absolute opposition, but just a reminder that the legislation as it's drafted is just a draft. It needs work. And I would just, I would defer almost absolutely to the comments of Ralph Moore. I think that everyone understands that the ban on gas blowers with a comprehensive and collective group effort in this community represents really great legislation in terms of compromise, and it's a point of view of property owners, environmentalists, business owners. But I want to be careful that caught up in this isn't some wholesale rejection of the, of the electric blowers. I would also remark that if we have only, you know, small plate of times for the electric blowers, one of the difficult aspects of having commercial property is keeping it clean, because you can't break it. So to limit the times in which we can use electric blowers, I think would have a lot of unintended consequences. I'd like to just make sure that you look at that and consider that the ban on the gas blower was really a noise-related issue, and we've addressed that with electric. So to use that as an open door to ban electric ultimately, you know, during the summer months, becomes unfair. So, thank you.
Thank you. Shiloh, I'll give this to you, too. We have, we've got John Bennett, Carol Reed Bennett, Clarence Banks, George Benedict, Zach Effley in opposition. Is the other gentleman, William Fox, ready to go now, Kat? We can always keep on.
I don't think we have anybody else on, just sign up chief. I think we've got through everyone. Is anybody else here to speak on the leaf blower? Did you sign in? Sorry.
I did.
Okay. Just state your name, please.
Mark, yes, of course. Hello, everybody. Thank you, thank you. My name is Markus Reyes. I've been living in Hampton, basically, over the last twenty-six years. And I run a company, landscaping company, for fourteen years. I, when, when I started my business, I didn't have a license. So I got pulled over, and they told me to license I did. So I think education, and we're not reaching anybody else who is in the landscaping business. I do the business myself. I'm fully familiar with it. I'm very happy. I was from a chef. And I wanted to say this, where I work is a big property, seventeen acres in Southampton. And I cook Saturdays and Sundays, breakfast, breakfast, lunch, and dinner for my clients. And when they do the cleanups, the five, five people doing the cleanup with the leaf blowers, they don't get bothered at all. They love it. They don't love it, like I say, but it doesn't bother them too much, because it needs to be done. There's no other way that they do it. I work from Newark to East Hampton, and the springs is really hard to break. I can't challenge anybody to break down the springs. So I think education to our business would be there. License, education about the blowers will be fantastic. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. At my old house, Marcus', Marcus' landscaping firm used to do the house that I lived in. He would come with a gas car, a leaf blower, I'd run the house. I said, Marcus, I'm in there. What are you doing? I can't.
I run the landscapers association on my land, and many, many of our members are in this room. We have over a thousand members who are licensed legal landscapers. In your last administration, we spent hours out here making this regional war. You were one of the first people out here that did this. And we came out eight or ten times to come up with something that the landscapers could live with. And more will live with, I think, so best. Talk to those people who come. Our association has gone to many towns and trained them how to use a blower. You don't just start a blow and go out there and go and take four guys or a beauty truck and have them come and start blowing. So we're more than willing to set up something along with Cindy. She went to the soft street. We'll bring you guys out here, show you how to use blowers, make it a lot better for homeowners. The other thing is that in Nassau County, to get a license, and we're all for licensing, you have to belong to an organization, either landscaping organization, an augerist, a nursery, something where you're getting the laws. We send out our newsletter. We, uh, cyclists, ex student, it's a problem. As cyclists, we run lower class, and we give you little cards that say you were trained, and we're, again, more than willing to train you. Thank you.
And we have your, do we have your contact information?
Um, I'll give you a quick.
Any one else in the audience want to speak on public hearing of the war?
We can give a brief, though.
It's very brief. See, I'm thrilled about the ideas of education, but I wonder if we should be doing something to educate the people on Meadow Lane, on those other streets, to understand that every blade of grass doesn't have to be blown off in the fall. And maybe we have an obligation to educate the property owners.
Thank you.
So, Kat, is there anyone else on Zoom that would?
Oh, real quick to, to just kind of follow up.
There was, uh, Mr. Fox, that can see if it's ready after dot.
Just one, one thing, as we talk about environmental issues, whether it's synthetic or organic fertilizers, with the density that someone spoke about, Cindy actually spoke about of the properties. In June, July, and August, we need a blower to blow off any fertilizer granules or controlled product granules, being it, uh, organic could be turkey or chicken manure to a synthetic product on hard surfaces, as we worry about the lake runoff. You know, granules do go on the patios. They go on the driveways. They go on the parking lots, like commercial buildings. So just another use of that electric blower in the season. You're talking about banning. I can tell you guys are not going to run around with brooms. I wish I could tell you they could. So you're going to actually potentially create more runoff into your storm drains, your lakes, you know, your buffer zones. You know, because we do want to clean off those hard surfaces. And again, organics have nitrogen as well. You know, your manure-based products that we're using. So regardless of the product, we don't want to get any over pattern off hard surfaces, patios, pavers, driveways, parking lots. Thank you.
Um, do you want, uh, Kat, can you get Mr. Fox back in? We can't hear this audio to work. You can't ask him. You can submit his comments.
Mr. Fox sent me a text.
If, uh, Don could probably, if that's, that's probably the easiest. Don is going to read, read Mr. Fox's correspondence to the record, and then he'll mention the, there's a.
Correspondence is from William Fox, Phil Fox, landscaping and property care. Zoom thing's not working. One, there's sixteen, there's sixteen hundred and fifty million properties in the village. They should all vote on this. Your, your full complement of, of taxpayers and homeowners. Enforcement. I'll help one Sunday a month, from seven-thirty to twelve. Three, there's no landscape work to be done by anyone on Sunday. No deliveries, nothing. So not even a homeowner can rake or sweep a step, is how he's interpreting the new law. That's crazy. Four, it's an economic cost of residence that the removal of blowers will cause an increased invoices to them. That's from Mr. Fox.
All right, thank you. And Maggie, before, okay, you, Mackie, feel free to jump in here, and then I'm just going to mention, we have actually forty-eight additional correspondences.
The mayor had those in summary, like a mini goes into the record, as well as the letters. I think some of these are duplicated, Don, or they've been submitted to me. But, um, I'll just make mention to the, of them as.
We can include those maybe in the minutes?
Well, I'm just going to note them.
Okay.
Attorney Ken Gray, if we could just.
Note them, okay.
List the names.
Should we let Mackie just have a brief moment, and then, and then we'll do the correspondences? This has been very productive so far. And I just want to thank everybody for coming out. And, you know, the goal is to put something that people can like, but I happen to be very proud of everyone in this public hearing, because I think everyone came out and really expressed their thoughts. And clearly, there's a lot of people that don't agree with each other here, but the fact that this is done in such a really, just, just an outstanding manner with people listening to each other, I think is a good, a good, a good sign of, of, of our community. But I'm sorry about that, but thank you, Maggie.
At the Southampton hearings, I heard a man say that when his landscaper showed up this month to do the spring cleaning, he knocked on the door and said, would you mind if I plugged in my, the electric leaf blower while I'm using yours? And he said, of course. So he did, and he did that, and did it, and then taking more time, and he left. That's a great solution. On my tiny property, I have five outdoor plugs. So I think if we could work together that, and if people would do that and write to their people and say, may I plug in one? That does, does away with the generator problem, which is quite an annoyance, I guess, to a lot of people. And when the village started it, it did not take any more time for them to use the electric. And when the village started it, it did not take any more time for them to use the electric and they did not charge any more money. So there's been a lot of talk about how time and money is going to be tremendous here. Didn't happen in the three years. Thank you.
I'm on Holy Ghost Street. For the landscapers, is there a possibility that like the house next to me, which maybe has, could use a scissors to cut their lawn? If you could limit the number of blowers that come on at any given time, one blower for this property, not five at the, at the same time.
Yes, education.
When the property is like a third of an acre and a pool and a pool house and a gigantic house, you don't need five blowers.
We agree with you.
And maybe then if you didn't have five.
Unnecessary overhead in the truck.
Then if you didn't have five people, maybe your trucks would be smaller so they wouldn't ruin my grass when you parked in front of them. And you would make it easier for me to get down Pellicle Street. Thank you.
That is a little slightly what you just.
All right, so I'll turn this over to Charlene. She's just going to summarize for our, our record in minutes, the correspondences.
Mr. Mayor, Ken Gray here. Can I just chime in for a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Obviously, yes, I was part of the leaf blower committee that had met on number, a number of occasions during Zoom. And I just want to, I want to reconfirm what the professionals have said during this meeting that they did not concede or agree that October 1, 2024 would be an appropriate cutoff date. Everything that they expressed this evening concerning whether or not the technology is available and will be available by 2024 and whether or not the equipment will be available for purchase. These are all issues that were raised and there was absolutely conversation where I, I believe, and I don't want to speak for them, but that they were more of the opinion that in October of 2024, we should, we should revisit the situation to find out exactly where the technology is, um, to see, you know, what would be the appropriate course of action at that time. So I just wanted to reaffirm that, that the, the, the comments that they made during the committee sessions are consistent with their meet, uh, their comments this evening. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Kimberly, I believe you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, good evening, board. Thank you for taking action and bringing this to a public discussion. I've heard a lot of good input on both sides. I did read your legislation. I think it needs some improvement and you should probably go back to the drawing board. With regards to phasing out the gas leaf blowers, we need to phase them out. But I'm not in agreement that electric leaf blowers be phased out. I think it would be a disservice to our homeowners and to the landscapers. I also think that you could get mileage, as I've said before, out of focusing on the permit process. It's not that difficult. And also there used to be two unbudgeted positions, part-time in the building department for enforcement. They were in the budget since 2019. So go, having proper enforcement would also bring you a long way. And I think education could probably be extended to potentially the managers or the homeowners of the large estates that have this work being done on it. So to help the landscapers as well. But again, I appreciate you moving on this. I don't know if anyone can still hear me.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cheryl, let me have the correspondences for a quick summary.
Yes. So we have correspondence from Dieter Von Leesten. He is in favor. We have a letter from Paige Luhan, who is actually on the leaf blower task force. She's in favor of the ban of the legislation. Jennifer Ash Ruddick, an email she resigned at 2.9 Twelton. She is in favor. Correspondence from Denver, uh, pair, 17 North Main Street, in favor. Correspondence from Ann Micklin, Mick Billen, Mick Billen. 70 Old Town Crossing, they are in favor. She's in favor. Correspondence from Susan Brun, in favor. Correspondence from Kimberly Ernst, 120 Elm, not in favor. Correspondence from Wayne Brett Schneider, 57 Lewis, not in favor. Correspondence from Jim Blieson, 128 Althee, not in favor. Correspondence from Natalie Scaldow, um, not in favor, from New Leaf Landscaping, not in favor. Correspondence from Theodore Danzig, Carlo Regugio. Okay, it's not my buzzer. Gregory Nelson, Brooke Brady, Emma Nagaki, Marissa Scotto, um, and Michael Reglazio, all from New Leaf Landscaping LLC, all of them not in favor. Correspondence from Tanya Die, no address. She is in favor of the legislation. Correspondence from Julie Regugio. She's the manager of New Leaf Landscaping, not in favor. Kevin Kenny, not in favor, also from New Leaf Landscaping. Christopher Batari, not in favor. Resident, Dr. Hart, resident, um, he is in favor of the ban. Correspondence from Lynn Reed, 109 Harvest Lane, um, not in favor. Correspondence from Dan Delvendole, um, from New Green Landscaping, in favor. Correspondence from Claude Shaw, 5 Cameron Way, uh, not in favor. Correspondence from William Scott, Mary Mahoney, 48 Captain's Neck, not in favor. Correspondence from Mark Finlander, no address, in favor. Correspondence from Colleen Sontemoro, 2229 Tittle Field Lane, not in favor. Correspondence from Victoria Ellen Wood, 153 Great Plains, in favor. Correspondence from John, John Dosek, 66 Bishop's, not in favor. Correspondence from Rob Curver, Coburn and Tom Luther. They were, uh, which is South Hampton Village Departmental Committee. They presented changes, proposed changes and amendments that the board should consider. But they are in favor of the legislation. Correspondence from Judith Oppenheim, 57 First Neck Lane, not in favor. Correspondence from Ann Bygre, Bygre, uh, no address, not in favor. Kevin Cutler, 65 First Neck, um, not in favor. Louis Follow, 34, 38, I'm sorry, 34 Old Town Crossing, not in favor. Amelia O'Adibella Murphy, 59 First Neck Lane, not in favor. Correspondence from Olivia March, no address, in favor. Correspondence from Lisa Bass, 20 Pelletro, not in favor. Correspondence from Dana Skelfoni, 20 Henry Street, not in favor. Correspondence from Jennifer Onna, 46 John Street, not in favor. Correspondence from William Nest, 120 Elm Street, not in favor. Correspondence from Judith Clubman, 106 Pulaski, not in favor. The correspondence from Peter Block, 106 Pulaski, not in favor. Correspondence from Patricia Noddy, 116 Boyston, um, in favor. Correspondence from Patricia Leonard, 320 Hampton Road, not in favor. Correspondence from Scott Reed, 106 Harvest Lane, not in favor. Correspondence from Peter Graylish, 54 Post Lane, not in favor. Correspondence from Kate Keys, Harvest Lane, not in favor. Um, I also have 31 letters that were received. Some of them are duplicates, um, that were handed delivered by Mr. Mahoney. All of them are not in favor. And in addition, um, we have, um, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight letters that were submitted by, um, Miss Reed, um, or which, um, state that they are opposed to the legislation. It will be part of the permanent record and stand in for the minutes.
Thank you, Cheryl. Are there any, at this point, are there any comments from board members?
Yes, I, well, I think that was, um, they go for coming this evening. It was great to hear you all. I just want to say, I, I unfortunately had no heart in this legislation. If I did, it would have been much different. I just people in the task force, I thank you for your time and input. However, this war, before I work, I would echo some of you by saying you need to readdress this. I actually, back in December, offered to the board to promote a local law to have, um, landscape representation. Unfortunately, my, um, um, my motion was not carried. So unfortunately, we are here now with this law and we should certainly readdress everyone's concerns accordingly. And we are here, all of you, to hear your voice. So I thank you all for coming and hopefully we can have a draft law and work through the law. The landscapers and this property owners alike, thank you all.
Thank you, Trustee McLaughlin. Um, just to clarify, the legislation that was given, uh, was given by the task force, not by the board. So.
I understand we are the ones who are going on. So we are the ones who, however I say.
So we, we, um, would welcome your help. And if there's any guidance that, that you could give us as far as what you would like to see in the legislation, that would be extremely helpful. So we really appreciate your guidance.
I'd be glad to. And again, I think the most important is what you all think because we are here to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee McLaughlin. Are there any other comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor, Maury Stevenson here. I was fascinated by the conversation in the debate and obviously a naughty problem with many, 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 uh, facets to it, uh, both, both for and against. My one thought would be that our current legislation already kind of deals with, uh, battery powered leaf blowers in that, uh, part of the code sets up a maximum decibel level that can be, uh, recorded at the property edge of 65 decibels, which would be under the, uh, output of most of the battery powered leaf blowers. So I would definitely be in favor of modifying the proposed resolution to eliminate all, uh, discussion of the electric leaf blowers, considering that they're already kind of covered by, by our existing legislation. It just needs to be enforced as that was brought up, uh, so well during the debate. And that would be my only point in terms of revising the, the proposed legislation.
Thank you, Trustee Stevenson.
And I also echo, we should not be even considering banning that. I think that that is a bridge too far, as was stated by a bunch of you. So.
Thank you again. And I wanted to reiterate, you know, this is a, a work in progress. So this was a draft given to us by the task force. So now it's our job to listen to everyone's feedback and to take that all into account. So, uh, that is very helpful. I don't, is there any other board members that have any comments?
I just want to say thank you. I think this was just terrific, uh, putting the task force together, uh, with, uh, people that had different views and from residents and landscapers alike. And, uh, I, I, I think it's very important that we all come together and we came together so well. It's great to see community come together like that and like we have this evening. And, uh, and everybody's respecting their views and we have, uh, some work to do on this legislation. And I think that we could really move forward with this and, uh, to, to most people be, uh, satisfied at some point. Not everybody's going to be happy about everything, but, um, I think we have enough input and that was given so gracefully this evening as well. So, uh, if we have plenty to work with and, um, and hopefully we'll come up with something that most people will be happy with. So I just want to thank you. It makes me very proud to be part of this community, uh, knowing that we all can come together like this and, and have respect for one another. So thank you, and especially to the, uh, the task force that I know put so much time, uh, into it. So, uh, thank you.
All right, thank you. And just a few words before we make the motion to adjourn. Basically to summarize some of the things that we had heard and learned tonight. First, I want to thank the task force that worked very hard on this. Of course, they, they didn't reach a consensus, but I think we made some progress there. The first thing that we certainly need to do that our budget and this legislation will address is, is enforcement. This will provide a level playing field for the industry. Uh, our ordinance department, building department, SDPD is committed to ensuring that anyone operating in the village is licensed. And we plan to support their efforts with a dedicated summer code enforcement officer that's in our proposed budget. In addition, again, licensing is extremely important. We want to lighten the burden on, uh, village, um, landscapers by licensing and accepting reciprocity with the town licensing process. And, uh, that's, uh, due to the, uh, the amendment in section, uh, 73 dash two of our code. We'll highlight that licensing process that we think, again, will level the playing field and address some of the concerns by some of the landscapers that were here today. Uh, the third thing that we want to highlight is the educational component. So we plan to circulate, uh, to our village residents, clear guidance for their, their landscapers to follow law and benefits from best practices. And we also will touch base with the landscaper, landscapers and the landscaping association to get their feedback and to make sure there's good consensus and communication. And then as far as, um, regulation, uh, the town is recently having a hearing on gas leaf blower laws themselves that this village had already put in place in 2019. There is a good proposal, uh, there are proposals for us to, uh, uh, move forward and improve the quality of life. But again, that's going to depend on input from our village residents. And as a mayor and a resident, you know, I'm sure that our trustees, uh, will have questions on this proposal. We'll take them to everything into account and, uh, they'll make sure that, uh, there's consistency between section 77 dash four of our code, providing guidance for noise exceptions and proposals for what is amending section 78 dash four, gotten use of leaf blowers. But we wanted to thank everybody for their feedback and for their participation tonight. I'll echo, uh, Trustee Rest is saying I'm very proud to participate in this and to have a really great group of people out here tonight, working together to try and do what's best for the village, despite the fact that, uh, there's various opinions on this. So, uh, thank you to all who participated tonight. We welcome everyone, uh, to stay for additional public hearings if you'd like. But of course, uh, no need if, if everyone has better things to do. So I'd like to make the motion to adjourn. The question is, what date should we adjourn this to? And then should we, and then because we're going to have to make some amendments, the question is, could we, do we need to actually notice out a, a new law?
May, may, may I jump in for a second? I, I, I think you're better off closing this public hearing and taking no action. And then amongst the board, um, coming up with a redraft and then re-noticing it, republishing it. That's my recommendation.
I have to object to that only because if you close it, you have to leave it open for written submission. So close it, leave it open for written submission. You'll come back to a draft and then you'll re-note it. But you can still close, leave open for written submission. So just modifying what your council.
Do you work in attorney's office?
I am an attorney. But that's what you're going to have to do. Otherwise, otherwise you, you're putting everyone in a strange spot tonight. So leave it open for comment in writing. But then re-note.
Yeah, well, we'll work for our council. I, I, there are certain, uh, uh, village laws that we obviously have to abide by. But again, would you mind, uh, just helping us out here?
I.
Is that correct?
I, I, I think I gave my recommendation to close the public hearing, take no action. And then we can redraft the local law and, and, and publish it and put it out. I'm, I'm not aware of any requirement that we leave it open for written public comments after we close the public hearing. And I, I, I don't know who said that, so I'm not, I'm, I'm at a loss.
I'm just saying you're starting from, you're starting from scratch.
The town just had this exact issue, that's why.
Right.
And, and they made quite a few amendments and they did not close it and reopen it. They just continued with the process and voted. Had a hearing and they voted it just last week.
All right, we'll, we'll follow our, our, our council. I've actually got some cases all that, that in the kitchen Maggie's saying, but, um, let's, um, let's, let's close this. We'll.
It's, Mr. Mayor, it, it's your option. I, I, I'm not saying that the other method is inappropriate or illegal.
All right, let's, um, let's, I'll make a motion to, uh, to close the, uh, the, the, uh, the public hearing. This is the, uh, public hearing, uh, public hearing regarding local law 5-2022, the local men village code, chapter 73, landscapers and 78 nuisances. Is there a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The hearing is now closed. We'll move to our next, uh, public hearing. We'll move to our next, uh, public hearing. The, uh, take a quick recess. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're ready to go here. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to open up our second public hearing tonight, and as a public hearing regarding the receipt of an application submitted by Heart of the Hamptons as a special exception use, is there a second to that motion to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll begin, uh, with our public hearing. I don't think there's any comments from the board, so we'll open this up to public comment. Please, uh, keep your comment to three minutes, and Sherlene's got a list.
Okay. Everybody, it's, it's kind of got mixed in with the gas leaf blower, so I'm going to try to call people in whatever order I can, from one side to the next. Okay. Judy Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustee McLaughlin, trustee Gina and Charlene and neighbors. I'm Judy Johnson, and I've been a resident here permanently for 66 years. Twenty-eight of those years I volunteered at the pantry. I volunteered by sorting clothes and giving out food and being nice to people and escorting them, and donating money in clothing and giving out things at Christmas. And I also taught for 25 years in high school. So I have a feeling about the population of this community. I know a lot of people, and I know that we have so many people, be we really or not. It's my understanding that over 300 families are registered at the pantry at least. Am I correct? 300 units, 101 person or 10. Okay. I also have noticed the changes in population here, the development here, and the changes in commercial endeavors, and I respect and admire all the efforts and successes to preserve the rich history of this community, which is indeed very rich. Recently, and in the past few years particularly, I regret having witnessed more acrimony and divisiveness here than in previous years, and I find that very disturbing. I think that everything in this village, in our government, should remain transparent, and it appears to be occasionally translucent, which doesn't suit me, but that's my opinion. A current issue in the village, which has been going on now for some time, is the location of the Hampton School pantry. And believe me, having been involved there for so long, it's hardly a pantry. Pantry means to me where I put my, my purchases that I'm not using tonight. The pantry has not only provided, over the years, food for people, it has provided emergency assistance, it has provided help with bills, it has provided transportation, oohs and oohs of things that people don't even know about. And when I first got involved, Alan Frolo, one of the founders, had a drawer in the desk with a few $5 bills, and if somebody came in and said they needed a taxi to go to the doctor, he'd give them a $5 bill, or he'd call the taxi and he'd arrange for them. It started out very small. It was a baby business. Now it is big business. It has hundreds of thousands of dollars in its budget, and it is servicing a lot of people. And it's extremely necessary in this community. I can't believe the fracas that has occurred over where this building is going to be, and it seems so reasonable to me that we put it in a place that we already own. I mean, after all, it's a very good location, it's a nice building, but of course they'd want to change the building. They want to renovate, and that would have to accommodate their needs. I'm wondering how many people here have ever been in the pantry or have seen how much space they have at Sacred Heart. They have a lot of space there, and that little building really isn't big enough, but it was the only option at the time. And I personally feel that the village was, as I say, precipitous in approving it so quickly without the public knowing what was going on. In addition to that, a 30-year lease seems to me like an awfully long lease, because I've been involved for almost 30 years, and what started out as a handout and me packing a bag of food to give to you is now completely different. It has so many facets. So I'm sure, you know, you guys are the trustees, and you're elected because we trust you, and we trust you to make a wise decision about where this place goes. I can't believe that in a village with this rese, bunch of resources, we can't find a place to put the pantry that is acceptable.
Yes.
Okay. I talk too much, but I, I, I'm sincere in my feeling that we need this, and we've got to find a place for it, and we've got to find a place that is acceptable. Thank you for listening.
We're going to call up, um, actually, Linda Riley. He's the applicant's attorney. Um, Ken Gray, ask him. We speak first before we have public comment. Okay. Thank you.
Linda Riley is the, uh, attorney of the applicant.
Linda Riley, 235 Hampton Road. I'm, uh, the attorney for the applicant, uh, who's made this application. Uh, just a bit of jurisdictional housekeeping first. I did, uh, deliver, uh, affidavit of, of, of posting and, uh, mailing of notices, uh, to the village, which I assume have been, uh, made part of the record. Um, and, uh, I, I have, we have submitted, uh, a very lengthy application with lots of exhibits to it and a lot of explanation. It, I know that it's all been on the agenda, all included on the agenda, so I don't want to, and I certainly can't take the time, to go over every bit of it, but I just want to hit a couple of key points.
Ms., Ms. Riley, not to interrupt you, Ken Gray here, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Are you referring to the, um, correspondence dated February 22nd, 2022, that you submitted to the board?
Yes.
And all of the attachments?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make specific reference to that document. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yes, February 22nd, uh, submission, which included a lot of appendixes and exhibits. Um, so I'm, I'm going to refer to that, but not repeat everything that's in it, because I don't have time or patience to allow for me to go through the whole thing. Couple of key points I want to hit, though, legally. I'm going to lead it to, uh, Molly Bishop, the director of, of the, uh, Heart of the Hamptons, and some of the other board members to talk about more the mechanics of the, uh, operation. But I want to tell you or emphasize that what we're doing tonight, we've had other meetings and other discussions. This is about a special exception use permit. There is a law that's been adopted by the board, which, uh, allows, in certain instances where certain conditions are met, it allows food pantries, um, as a special exception use. And again, assuming that certain criteria have been met. Um, this is an application that has been submitted by the, uh, applicant, is the Heart of the Hamptons, uh, for property that is village-owned property. It is, uh, not, and it, and it is something that is an application on your SECR, it is a type-two action. It is under 617.5C9 of the Code of Rules and Regulations. The expand, it's a construction or expansion of a non-residential structure or facility involving less than 4,000 square feet of floor area, and not involved in any change in zone or use variance. It does not involve either one of those things. So I want to emphasize that because, um, it is a type-two action, which means that no environmental assessment forms are required, uh, and there is no further determination that has to be made by the board if, other than to acknowledge that it is a type-two action. Under law, special exception uses are permitted uses if they're granted by the board, there is jurisdiction over it, and the, and the granting is, uh, based on criteria. I set forth all of the, there are general criteria, and there are special criteria that have to be met. I set forth all of the general standards under 11622 in that, um, the memo that I'm talking about, the letter dated February 22nd. But a few things that I want to highlight, which are that this, uh, application meets the objectives of the master plan and subsequent studies. I pulled from the master plan absolutely, um, specific portions that deal with, um, something I want to emphasize, which is that the, uh, existing pattern of development is something that the, uh, master plan and the vision plans after that emphasize again and again. And I think it's important because this proposal, in my mind, does fit in with the existing pattern of development. There is a municipal building. There was never a house on this site. It is, it is close to centers where there are, um, transportation availability and walkable sidewalks and ability to get there, close to schools and everything else. Um, so, and there, I, I, again, all, I, I don't have anything additional to say about the speci, the general criteria, uh, refer again to my letter. Um, the special conditions that are listed in 11623B, we also go through there, and, uh, clearly, we squarely meet all five of those special criteria on the head. So I don't, I don't know if I was limited to three minutes or not, but...
No, you weren't. She's only the applicant. Ken, did you tell me that?
She was only one, like, 20 minutes.
No, she was not. She's the applicant, so she's presenting.
Okay.
Ken, I just wanted to check in with you to make sure everything on Zoom is going okay, or if you need a moment to...
That, that speaker right there is, I don't know what it's doing.
Well, someone unplugged it before, so you...
Yeah, I plugged it back in, but maybe the connection, well, it's green, so it's on. And, um, and as you can see right here, just so you know, um, I've gone in here and right here chose USB speakerphone and USB speakerphone, but it's still giving a problem. I don't know what's going on. So it's chosen, it should be working. Ken, can you hear us?
He cannot.
All right. Let me try system that.
Ken, can you hear us?
He said he can't.
Let me try this. Ken, can you hear us now?
Now, now I can, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I chose something different this time. Okay.
I don't, I don't know what happened there.
Yep. Me either. I think we're good.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Ken, uh, should we have John Ellsworth present next?
Uh, yeah, yeah. If John wants to speak, uh, he's on the call, right? Linda completed her presentation.
Yes. John is from Nelson Pope and Voorhees. They were...
Charlene, if you can talk into the microphone a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, John Ellsworth from, um, Nelson Pope and Voorhees is also partly applicant. He's going to present the, um, actually, he's going to, uh, talk, uh, to the board about, present to the board about the environmental, uh, study that Nelson Pope and Voorhees did. The SECR member.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just very briefly, we did review the submission that, um, applicants' counsel submitted with regard to the analysis of the consistency with the special, uh, exception criteria, and we concur with that analysis.
Uh, okay. John, I, you know what? I, because I couldn't hear Linda's presentation, and I apologize.
I, I couldn't hear it either.
Okay.
And do you still charge us if you can't hear?
Or Linda, if you're there, you addressed the, um, correspondence from the chairman of the planning board recommendation for the special exception use?
Was that true?
I couldn't hear it when I said it.
No. And that's why we were getting texts that there was no volume, and now it's corrected.
Okay. It might be correct. Should, should, shall I just...
Yeah, the highlights.
So, uh, Linda, we, we do have, uh, your, uh, presentation and letter in our packet, which is also on the village website. Uh, so you're welcome to re-present, but, uh, all the, all your information is available to the public as well, just, just to clarify.
Uh, but I, I just...
If, if people can speak into their microphones, that would be helpful?
I'm going to try. I'm going to try something different until I get this sound right. I'm supposed to be using this.
I, I, um, Ken, can you hear me all right?
I can, thank you.
Okay. I just want, I, I'm going to, we just repeat a couple of legal points that I made that you didn't hear. One of them was that although it was, uh, the adoption of the local law was a type-one action, um, it's, it's our position that this application that's submitted, that is the purpose of the hearing tonight, the application for the special exception permit, is in fact a type-two action, um, because under 617.5C9 of, uh, the New York Code Rules and Regulations, uh, because it is a construction or expansion of a primary, uh, non-residential structure or facility involving less, less than 4,000 square feet. So it, it's, it's our contention that there is, because it is, I think, a type-two action, if you agree with me that it is, and if that would be your, your conclusion, but that, um, if no environmental assessment forms are, uh, required or no environmental assessment is, uh, necessarily, necessary to be conducted. It's, it's not subject to, in pursuit to SECR under that particular, um, law. Um, obviously, there are things that relate to the environment that are part of the general conditions and special conditions. All of those issues have been met, uh, or all of those, uh, conditions and criteria have been discussed, and we argue that they've all been met. Um, and I just, I guess, wanted, and, and there was a traffic study also that the village conducted that was, um, part of the exhibits that, that we submitted with our application as well as, um, everything else that was submitted. I don't want to repeat everything I said. I just wanted to hit a legal part.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I, I just want to point out that the, uh, planning board, uh, in a letter dated March 17th, 2022, uh, considered the, uh, special exception standards concerned in the village code, contained in the village code, as well as a special criteria for food pantry use, and they stated that they are in support of the board of trustees granting the special exception, uh, for the subject application, with the understanding that a site plan application would go before the planning board, uh, for further review and comment. Secondly, we have John Ellsworth, uh, on the, on the call from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, who helped, uh, draft the legislation and, um, review the application. And, uh, Mr. Ellsworth, it's my understanding that, uh, Nelson Pope and Voorhees is in agreement with the applicant, that this is in fact, uh, this would, application itself would be a type-two at this point, and no further review required at that point under New York State SECR. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the item in the type-two, uh, action list that was cited, which is, uh, uh, number nine on the list in, um, 617.5 of the SECR regulations, uh, is the specific item under which this falls as a type-two action.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we've had the applicant's presentation. Um, we've heard from Nelson Pope Voorhees. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mayor, I turn it back to you if you, to continue the, uh, the public hearing.
Thank you, Ken. Sherlene, is there... Thank you, Ken. Charlene, is there an additional list of public comment?
We do have a list of public comments. We have received communications from Walter Dean, Old Town resident. He's not in favor of the four. He's opposed to the special exception. There's a recommendation letter from the planning board, which was written by the attorney. Correspondents from Mrs. Randall Post, no address, not in favor of granting the exception. Colleen Fagan, no address, not in favor. Leslie Stevens, no address, not in favor. Correspondents from Joe Burke from Burke and Sullivan Esquire, not in favor. Correspondents from Nestor Garines, no address, not in favor. Correspondents from Vincent Sowinski, no address, not in favor. And correspondents from Paul Fagan, no address, not in favor. I mean, do you want folks there to sign that?
Yes, okay. Is there someone that's first on list, or should we go? I know that Anton Moravina is the opposition attorney, if you wanted to go.
Yes, we can have Anton.
Attorney's first, and then we'll get to residents.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of the board. I represent several neighbors who are within the immediate vicinity of meeting House Lane. By the way, I have previous, I gave a memos by Mr. Jones and by myself as well. Do you have a copy of that? I can give that to the board. I have additional copies with me now.
Thank you.
By the way, I would like to have, Mr. Mayor, I have Steven Schneider, who is a professional traffic engineer. We just recently retained him to evaluate the VHB traffic assessment study that was done, and also to provide a further analysis with respect to associated traffic impacts if the special exception use was to be granted at Meadow Lane. In addition, I, in addition to the memos I just gave, there was a reference to the planning board's letter dated March 17. My read of that letter, my read of that letter was that they had grave concerns about traffic-related impacts associated with the granting of this application. It was not, it was not viewed, in my view, as a favorable or hands-free approach to the granting of the application. But there is, there are legitimate traffic-related concerns if the application was to be granted. I, because we have retained Mr. Schneider just recently, and because of the importance of this issue going forward, I would like this record to be kept open, and also for public comments to be made down the road as we take into account the applications that has been made and the representations associated with that application. I also would like to remind, stay in the board and all due respect, there is a pending Article 78 proceeding challenging the legality of that local law, and as well as the secret determination that was made. I would recommend that no action be taken currently until such time as that Article 78 proceeding is resolved, and certainly that the Heart of the Hamptons not take any action associated with the improvement of a facility until such time as the Article 78 proceeding is resolved. I had looked at the application, and from my read of the application, it's, a number of things have been said which we are relying on. They include, for example, and my understanding is, is that the food pantry operations, when I say food pantry, I mean all of its panoply of associated benefits and services to the community, are, are accomplished between the hours of 10:00 and 12:00 on Wednesdays and 10:00 and 12:00 on Fridays. I, I understand that delivery trucks will be located on the west side. They will only be using the parking lot associated with the church, which I understand, by the way, is at least the Village. I understand the dumpster also will be on the west side. I am told, I'm advised, that there are approximately 200 trips in VHB study, Mr. Schneider will get into this more. 200 trips that have been contemplated or taken into account. How, of course, that's going to be accomplished between the hours of 10:00 and 12:00 on Wednesdays and 10:00 and 12:00 on Fridays. God only knows. But anyway, I just, again, Mr. Schneider will be commenting further on that. Now, I would like to discuss very quickly, and I appreciate the board's patience. I'm going under the assumption, because as we must, that the local law has been passed, and as a result, until it's declared invalid, it remains a local law that should be looked at and followed. So I, I say to myself, what kinds of conditions ought to be imposed, mindful of the application that was made? I state this in my letter, my memo, I should say. And it's, and without, of course, waiving our rights with respect to the Article 78 proceeding that has been brought. Some of those conditions would include that the, as a condition of the permit, if it's going to be granted, that the Heart of the Hamptons be held to comply with, with the terms of the license agreement, for example. That's a very important consideration, and that they, that should be a condition of the permit. The, the, I understand from the site plan that there is a refrigeration unit. According to the license agreement, it should be attached to the building. By the way, that should be located on the, not on the easterly side, the residential side. But if there's going to be an outdoor refrigeration unit, and there's no reason why it can't be on the inside, by the way, it doesn't have to be on the outside. If it's going to be on the outside, that it be located at the park on the west side of the, of the, of the premises. I understand a dormer is going to be a part of the site plan, and instead of the dormer facing the residential side, perhaps it be used to face the parking lot side. And as a result, it will not intrude on the privacy of, as those on the second floor of the dormer with their offices are looking in the backyards of residences, as opposed to looking at the backyard, looking at the parking lot. There is a potential of the need for an emergency generator of some kind to service the refrigeration unit. I say that, that if there's going to be a generator that should be considered by the Heart of the Hamptons, that the generator be located on the, again, on the west side, and no portion of the generator be located on the east or front parking lot. The site plan submitted by the application, submitted in the application, makes reference to an existing reliance on an existing sewer, sewer treatment facility on, on the property, whereas the license agreement requires the Heart of the Hamptons to install a completely new one. There's going to be additional comments made by our traffic, I'm sorry, by our land planner, Mr. Jones, regarding the efficacy of using, and the problems associated with using the existing sanitary system to accommodate the kind of increased intensity of use. The, the delivery trucks, dumpster, garbage trucks, et cetera. I understand based upon representations of the Heart of the Hamptons that the only way access they will be having will be through the church parking lot. And, and finally, that the permit include an understanding that if this application is granted and conditions are imposed, that the, that the note condition should be revoked, modified, or waived, absent a public hearing with notice to members of the public, and that the permit only be allowed for every three years, subject to renewal by the board every three years, depending on how circumstances dictate at that time. But that the, but the license not be, or the permit not be granted on a perpetual basis. That really concludes my, my presentation. I would like to have Mr. Schneider, Mayor Warren, to speak after me so he can give further comments. He would make preliminary comments regarding his understanding of the traffic report that was prepared and its, and its ability to satisfy the demands that would be placed if this application were to be granted.
Sure, we can limit that to three minutes, but I did want to just say a few things. So this tonight, and this is for you and for the audience, this is specifically for special exception permit. Right, we, they, the applicant will have to go for a site frame review in front of the planning board where all those site concerns will be discussed. And then any issues about exterior dormer, of course, has to go to the architectural review board. And then any, anything on height setbacks, et cetera, will likely have to go to the ZBA. So these are, are issues directed to the land use boards.
Not exclusively, not exclusively. The matters I raise are matters that can be stated as a condition to the issuance of a permit. The, the, the efficacy of having an outdoor refrigeration unit, for example, in a residential neighborhood is not a matter of, in some respects, is a matter of site plan. But also, given the location of this lot relative to the 12.5 residence district, is a matter that should be addressed by the board. And the, and the board, you have the jurisdiction to stay as, say, as part of your conditions, meaning you're going to be granting the application, where the refrigeration unit ought to be located, where the delivery trucks have to be located. By the way, a function of the, how delivery trucks access the lot is, is, it depends on where the refrigeration unit is, for example, likewise the dumpster. So it's like, you can't clinically separate that this is a planning board component, and only they look at it versus a board trustee matter. They are, there are, there are interrelated matters that the board, this board should consider. And a refrigeration unit and the, its location, its ability to service, even how it faces, by the way. Let's, for example, have it facing the parking lot. These are matters that the board should consider so that it promotes an efficient access to the refrigeration unit and the dumpster via the parking lot. And that's something that should be imposed as a condition to the, to the, to the permit. If the, if the site plan board, the planning board, rather, has its own, own comments, whatever, I mean, that can be addressed, and they'll certainly be taking guidance from the board. But those are matters that should be addressed in the permit itself, if they're going to be granting.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please, thank you.
Steven Schneider. Schneider, I believe you might have been, did you sign up, points on the sign of tea?
I wanted to make sure I was heard.
Okay. You put two different phone numbers down, so.
The young lady said.
You have two different phone numbers.
You made, I did, Charlie probably made a mistake.
Correct, I think I did.
Okay, you have three minutes.
I'm clicking more a little bit.
Yes, I'm.
That's the mayor's discretion.
We're just about five minutes.
We'd appreciate if you can keep it at three, because we have another public hearing and a lot of people.
I would try my best.
Thank you.
But don't start it yet. My name is Steven Schneider, Schneider Engineering, 43 C Cliff Avenue, Middle Place, New York. I've been doing traffic safety engineering for over 50 years. And I just was brought on board a couple days ago, so just bear with me for a few minutes. I read most of the documents that at least were received. Realize I'm only here for traffic safety issues, not for or against, obviously, something that's a positive, just the location of where it is. And the first, first point was that there were some discrepancies between the special exception report, a letter, and the traffic studies. There was quite a few discrepancies between them, and that sort of raised a red flag to me. I'll go into some of them quickly. The special exception letter and the traffic study discussed the parking will be four onsite parking spaces that are joining a church parking lot which contains 75 spaces. The traffic safety, sorry, the traffic study failed to conduct any parking study to, to demonstrate that parking spaces will be available during the site's peak hours, which can generate well over, I believe, 79 parking space requirements. The church parking on the, the church parking lot is a parking lot used Sundays for church purposes in the morning, which can generate parking demand from multiple other nearby uses, like actually, there's a museum there, there's people going shopping, as well as during the week, there is parking for people who are actually going to the church for classes. I read that online, a few of the courses during the week. I actually took a count this afternoon at 4:30 today, and it showed that there were 20 people parked in, in the parking spaces where there's nothing in that building right now. So there were 20 already parked in the parking spaces. The study does not address, address that insufficient parking in the church parking will be used by people seeking to park on the street. This would create a dangerous condition since the meeting house lane is a narrow 24-foot wide street, leaving enough room for two travel lanes only. You cannot park on either side. One side has no parking allowed, and the other hand, Russell Wood signed, the other is no parking in front of or near the church. So there is no parking allowed. So there's no other place for the park except in, in the parking lot. There are no sidewalks on the south side adjacent to the site, and the church parking lot, which, which poses issues for pedestrians walking to and from the site. Special exception application letter states that delivery trucks will be instructed to utilize the church parking lot to make deliveries, to limit the need to, to reverse into, into the street parking. They're basically backing up, coming out, can't be done physically. There are other conflicts in the letter, I'll just go over it quickly now, about truck deliveries. One says it's going to be on the site, and the other report says it's not going to be on the site, it's going to be in the parking lot. So there are many discrepancies like that in this. The traffic study discusses delivery vehicles, box trucks, you know, box trucks can be 48 feet long, and putting them through the parking lot where people are parking, going to shopping, et cetera, is not the safest place to put it. And normally, any engineers would try to keep away from having deliveries through parking lots with beige trucks. Also, you mentioned, you mentioned earlier that March 17th letter, which I also agree that they also brought up the fact that traffic is an issue and should be looked at. And that was something to me very major in what they said. They, also the consistencies, and one, one report's talked about it being five days a week being open. The letter suggested only two days a week from 10:00 to 12:00 on Wednesdays and Fridays, another big difference. Plus, there was 1,600 customers, quote unquote, on their website noted, whereas they're only talking about in the traffic study only 200. So there's a big discrepancy of eight times that.
Three minutes is way over.
How much is way over?
Well, you're.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We've got two minutes to go, so.
But you got the gist of what I'm trying to say, is that they're not consistent, there are a lot of discrepancies, and traffic was not looked at, and that's the only reason why I'm here is traffic safety, but people. Thank you.
I have somebody who I can't really read, it says Miss Corwin in Jersey, but it starts with an A R. June.
Alan Corwin.
Alan. Okay.
There you go. I'm Alan Corwin. I'm going to speak carefully because I'm a member of the planning board, and I understand from Linda, who's a brilliant attorney, that it's coming back. Almost everything at the planning board is recorded officially in the letter. While he entered every generically objection, he went through the whole thing, every point that's in file. And the exhaustive job is one of the longest presentations to be had this year. And my preface for you guys, which is a special thing we've done, it's a great idea. Like this wonderful lady here, I have not been involved with the Heart of the Hamptons for long, only since Hilton Carter took over on new management, which I think was maybe six or seven years ago. And he did a wonderful job of moving it forward. A lot of changes were made from just handing out soup to people. The volume changed a lot because of COVID. I assume it was a factor, maybe, maybe it's not COVID, but a safe assumption is to say COVID is a period that we're going to get through. Keep that in your assumption of what happens. What concerned us most, which now that we studied that, is the traffic study. I presented then to the planning board, because I think it just arrived. I went and read it. I've had a lot of traffic studies in the Village. I've even bought one, paid extensive one for, in Lane at one point. It's a terrible traffic study where they, the traffic wouldn't count. For your background, because the traffic is so bad for occasional, I say occasional compared to something systematic uses by the ambulance department, taxpayers paid six or seven million dollars to move the ambulance at the urging of the planning board with the, at the urging of the trust. at the urging of the planning board with the, uh, urging of the trustees, with the planning board saying that wouldn't be anywhere mentally bad for the dog park and so forth. They had to move it because the traffic on Windmill Lane would be superior to the problems of the ambulance using, meaning occasionally, it was a real issue for a then set up trustee, not you. You're, you're a new, new watch. But that was what, five, five years, four years, five years ago. The issue of, of Meeting House Road being difficult is still there. Now, I tried to suggest that maybe the Presbyterian Church should be there. The parking lot is crucial. The parking lot that Michael Vitrono has at the church down there is twice as big for parking. I counted all the spaces.
No, it has fewer spaces total, and he only has half.
I know.
Okay, and he has a school there, and there's a school.
Uh, there's a school there in the mornings. I understand that. I'm just saying, in terms of using a parking lot, which has been satisfactory, number one, I counted all the spaces, it was under 42. If he says seven, I'll go for the 72. 142 parking spaces. We, that's not really, it's just as crazy. And Hill Street is a wide street, and everybody parks the funeral, like the temple and everything else. And it's fine, you can really use it. It's great for the deal. What the planning board was worried about was, things will change. It's going to change. And I hope it changes because it's a great thing. We need one of these in the village. Maybe there's another location, that's up to you and the rest of them. And I hope, it really needs to go in. I, I've done furniture, I've done donations, I've, all the stuff she mentioned, I've, I've supported. I know all about it. But it's changing, and you're in charge of the change, but we've got to get it to fit those changes. And the village trustees will get the watch. Thank you, thank you.
Charlie, can I speak?
Sure. Every point in campus space.
I will, I will. I have. I, um, I am Molly Bishop. I'm the director of presentations. Be careful, I've got another test. Okay. Um, I, uh, I'd just like to address, uh, some of the issues that have been brought up, especially about parking uh, and traffic. Uh, so, uh, the, the parking lot at the Presbyterian Church, uh, does have more spaces than the parking lot adjacent to our current location. There are over 50 full-time employees that are there from 8:00 AM until 3:00 PM at the school every day. Uh, there are kids walking back and forth across the parking lot to go to the playground. Uh, we have never had a single issue not finding a place to park only in the parking lot that's available to us, not in the other. We have never had a single issue with cars, you know, taking up spaces on the road. We have operated, uh, during two funerals. You know, there have been back-to-back funerals at Sacred Heart at the same time that we are giving out, and never had a single issue with someone finding a place to park for a funeral or finding a way to come get food from us. So I don't know how to explain to people that it has just not been an issue when they want to make it an issue. Uh, but it really just has not been ever an issue. I think maybe only the first month of COVID, um, back in March of 2020, when 800 new families found their way to Heart of the Hamptons, but those families have now most of them gotten back to work or found food pantries that opened closer to them and don't need us as much. And to, to address, uh, some of the discrepancies that Mr. Schneider feels that we have made, we do have 1,600 registered families that can come to us anytime they need anything. But right now, we are only serving about 130 families each week, and that is over four hours of distribution. Um, they space themselves out, you know, on their own. It, it just seems to work out that people are only there for maybe a few minutes while they, you know, wait with one person in front of them to collect food, give their name, and then, and then leave. They're only on site for a few minutes, like I said, and at times, we've operated as a drive-through when things were busier, and then they're really only on site for less than a few minutes. Um, we are very flexible. We want to accommodate our customers as best that we can, but we also want to be good neighbors and good tenants. And so if ever we feel like we need to adjust anything, we would do that in the best interest of the neighborhood and for our clients. Um, we are open Monday through Friday. Anybody could walk in and ask us for help, or most likely on the other days, it's just us there as staff. We have a staff of five full-time people and, uh, one or two volunteers occasionally. But on Wednesday and Friday from 10 to 12 is the time that we advertise that clients can come and collect, uh, their week's worth of groceries. Um, uh, so, you know, some of the other issues that Mr. Borabino brought up are all things that we would address in the other land use boards. Um, some of what he said is, is, um, you know, maybe incorrect, but other things, you know, we are happy to discuss with them and be flexible on all of them. We just want what's best for the village and, you know, for our points. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, Board of Veneers? Where is she? She wants to show up. Judy Maceless?
Hi, um, I'm a reporter. I think it's very generous of the village to offer all of this to Heart of the Hamptons. And I've been a big fan of Heart of the Hamptons, and we've been giving to it for years. But this just seems like the absolute wrong place. It's, it's a, an intersection of two streets that bring people in and out of the village, and to add, um, extra trucks and other things. I mean, I go down Meeting House Hall with them, and I often have to pull over and kind of park to let the other guy go through. You've got the long, the long guys, you've got everything else on that street. And that parking lot, the church parking lot, is often packed full of people who can't find a parking place in the village. So if you take away some of that parking place for people in the village, you're going to have more crisis down Meeting House Lane and Main Street and Job's Lane, and churches change, ministers change, congregations change. You've got a 30-year thing, and you're committing to 30 years of everybody agreeing that this is going to work. What happens if it doesn't work out? And you've spent all this money renovating it, and then the church says, oh, no, thank you. It's not going to work. It doesn't work. It's too much for our parking lot. And it's been a parking lot that's really sort of belonged to the village for as long as I've been here, which is like 1970. We parked there because we could always get a place. Um, so I think you're just adding fuel to the fire of congestion beyond reality, or beyond what's possible to make happen. And I love Heart of the Hamptons, and I think you should have a fundraiser to get from Murkowski's Ice or someplace where it's not going to be in conflict with the other things going on in the village. Thank you.
Joanne Hale? If you want meeting here, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board members. Thank you for having me here tonight. First of all, I have, I just, I did write something, but I want to ask you, Molly, how can you compare the, um, uh, the Hill Street where you are right now to, Hill Street is like this. Meeting House Lane is like this. You could have abundant amounts of trucks coming in and out where you are right now. It wouldn't affect, you have, how many acres is the church there? Lots, lots of acres. It didn't, it's not going to, to affect, you know, your location now the way it's going to, to affect my location. I'm right across the street from where this will be. I can't even get out of my driveway at this point. Um, and, and, um, you haven't, you're not even there yet. I have to wait five minutes so that someone who is, you know, who's nice and lets me get through, and then I have to figure out because there, there, there's traffic coming both ways, how I'm going to get in there, sort of turn this way, turn that way. It's just, I don't. I just did my taxes. I, um, I contributed a lot of money to your, to your, um, uh, to the Heart of the Hamptons this year. So I'm not saying you shouldn't, you shouldn't, you know, um, put a, a pantry in the village, but you're just looking, you're just looking up the wrong, the wrong tree. It's just not, it's, it's. I can't believe, Jesse, you knowing, I mean, you, you, you're in the, you're in the village. Let's face it. You know what the traffic is. If, if the people can't even park in that lot, you're missing out on business too. Because they're definitely not going to park on Main Street. There is no parking. Job's Lane, there is no parking. What are they going to do? Go home? What are they going to do? You're a businessman. You should see this. Unless something a little fishy is going on, which I don't know, and, you know, um, I, I, I don't understand how you can even think, think of having this. You know, you had a meeting March 22nd. Nobody was alerted of that meeting. I didn't know. I didn't know. You sent me, Mr. Riley, um, the, the letter saying there was going to be a meeting tonight. Nobody else got it. I asked everybody. Nobody else got it. So I'm the only one that got it because I took a picture so everybody could see it in my phone. Alright, so, you know, we, we elect you to be responsible, to make responsible, informed decisions about our life in our village. Um, we also expect you to communicate with us, inform us, and most of all, respect us. We count on you for this. Um, I've lived in, I've lived in my home here for 50 years. So, you know, and I've seen the, the traffic increase and increase, which you have in the few years that you've been here. You know, you know. Um, the process is, you know, that you, that, um, you followed to get us here tonight has been anything really but open and transparent. We've asked you questions. I've asked you questions for a year, and I've never gotten any answers. I've never gotten anything in the mail, any, any reports, um, nothing, nothing. And who was it that was just saying that they were asking for minutes, which they never received either? I think, I think it was Cindy McNamara. She never received anything she asked for too. How can this go on? How can you make a decision when nobody in this, in this village knows what's going on? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a, a few, few quick things just to, um, well, I, I understand that this does, this will affect you because you are actually across the street. You're probably the most affected by this out of anybody. Uh, so I do, uh, feel your, your concerns. That's, that's one issue. The other issue as far as village protocols and things like that, uh, you know, nothing issue is going on. I don't think you think that. And also minutes on the website. Uh, the local laws are noticed according to New York State Village law. Those are all done, you know, by the book. Um, so there shouldn't be any concern there. Uh, I think we should focus on tonight, your legitimate concerns as a neighbor, uh, to, to this change, and this is why we have the, the public hearing. And, um, you know, we want to do the best we can for the village, and, um, I would just.
But how can you keep doing the best when you see it right in front of your eyes? That the traffic and the location is not, what's, what's needed, you know, in that, in this location that you're talking about? How? How?
I'll, um, I'll let people continue. I'm also happy to continue to have, have our conversation. I just wanted to make a few clar, clarifications.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. We are directly impacted by this location. We live around the corner at 32 South Main Street. And we happen to be on the west side of the building. So refrigeration, trucks backing up, car doors slamming, um, we're going to hear it. We're going to be impacted by any pollution. Uh, we're going to really be impacted by the traffic. Now, this study is flawed, of the, the traffic study that was done. It was done in April, April 27th and November 1st. That's not realistic. Come around in the middle of the summer, and you will see bumper to bumper traffic. We live around the corner. We see it every day. This location is nothing like Hill Street and Sacred, Sacred Heart. I agree. It's a, it's a small, narrow street. It's it only has a sidewalk on one side. I walk and run on that street every day. It's hairy getting across when I'm running on one side that I have to run over to the other side. So I know, and this is at 7:00 in the morning, the traffic only gets worse. And it only gets worse during the year, and every year it gets worse. Now, we supported all of you and voted for you to help us with the village. I think traffic is probably one of the number one concern. We, we are all in favor of the food pantry and support it. I'm sure that we can find a commercial location or something more suitable in the village than this location. I'm sure also that the food pantry is going to want to grow, and it only makes sense. So there's got to be another location that you can grow in and, uh, not upset the community around it. Also, having a lease. I've done, uh, I've been in, we'll just say for 30 here. Usually the lease is only as good as people assign it. And what happened if that person disappeared? Someone else comes in and has a new idea. Let's say in your record. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just say one other thing, and I'll, and I'll, I'll be very quick, quick about it. Um, what happens after a year if we sign a 30-year lease? What happens in a year when we see that it's a calamity going on? What happens then? We just sit back and say, okay, well, we only have another 30 years to go. What happens next year? But, you know, when that happens, not if, when? Are we, are we stuck to this 30-year lease?
Well, let some other, uh, people speak. I would, I would urge you to, um, Molly is there and, and I know you guys have spoken, but I would urge you to, to, to speak together and, and talk about the designs for the, uh.
What does that happen to a 30-year lease?
Joanna, would, would you mind if we, we, we will get to everyone on the list, and then you can come back up and make additional. Thank you. Let's, you, you've had your, your time, but let's, let's keep on, let's keep on rolling.
Okay, um, we have to keep on to, we have four more people in the audience. Um, Nikki Athol?
I'll go to the end.
I was on the list for the other thing, but I'm doing both.
You're welcome to. Come on.
Come on, knock somebody up.
959 Willie Street. Um, I've been volunteering, um, for part of the Hamptons, which I have a different name, um, for almost 20 years through four different directors. I think it's an amazing place, and I'm sort of astonished at this uh, how this, this turned out emotionally. First of all, through all four of those years and four, four different directors, going back, I don't even know, maybe over 10 years, the church has been asking them to leave. They always would talk to us as volunteers, saying, you know, the church wants us out. They don't have room. They have, and then they had a growing Hispanic population in the town, and they were doing more and more and more services. Um, they wanted the space, and they asked nicely over and over again, and the directors looked around town. It was known everywhere in town, but they were looking. So for people to walk in here to. So for people to walk in here tonight, it is like they just dropped in from Mars and saying, oh, why don't you just get another place? Half the town, I think, was looking for a place for them. Is that correct, Mom?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, ask anybody who's been around here a while, everybody knows that. And people did help and they did try, but they couldn't find something that, that was either appropriate or they couldn't afford, or, or whatever the reason was. They couldn't do it. It wasn't for lack of time. Now, about traffic. Every street in the village honestly has a traffic problem. You're either a cut-through street or all the school buses line up or the ambulance turns, or everybody seems to have a complaint about their street. We're a tiny little village with tiny little roads. So now to talk about, oh my God, we can't do this here. Of all places, it's perfect. You have a church, you have a history museum, and you have an ambulance barn. That's, that's the kind of zoning that shouldn't, that those things should belong together. And events go on at all those places simultaneously. It's 24 hours a day, the ambulance barn. And, you know, now all of a sudden, people on that street are like, oh my God, you know, there's stuff on our street. The, the church all summer has that, um, what is it? That fair going on. History museum has something a couple of times a week. That we now doing COVID, as you know.
Isn't that a nice experience?
Even allowed it. And, and so there, there's a lot going on there now and it works. And the few amount of spaces, when the traffic expert says 79 spaces, as she says, five people work there and a couple volunteers, I mean, I don't know what you're talking about. In only four hours a week, someone comes in for food. Also, I have to object to, this has been going on for years. As you know, they feel and feel and feel. Today, the community with an expert witness, that absolutely, who asked for a delay in your decision. Now, you can't do that. No court in the world would ever allow that. They knew about the traffic. They all say they knew about the traffic from day one. Today, they hired, you say they got hired, what, three hours ago or three days or three something? Um, that absolutely should not be allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean Hatcher?
I am on the board of Part of the Hamptons, but I've lived or worked in the village of Southampton for all 51 years of my life. I do have a unique perspective in that I happen to work at 8 Main Street, which is on the corner of Meeting House and Main Street. And I happen to park in that parking lot. So I am uniquely aware, since I park there every day, Monday through Friday, of what the traffic patterns actually are. Oh, sure. Thank you. I get there, you know, probably around nine o'clock, nine thirty. There is rarely any traffic there. Honestly, I don't think I've ever had an issue at that time of the day. I don't know what goes on beforehand, before I get to work at six or seven in the morning. And I leave at 3:30, four, 4:30. And during the summer months, I have to admit, if I stay at the office till five or 5:30 or even 4:30, there is traffic that builds up there during the summer months. The amazing thing about Heart of the Hamptons is we are the perfect tenant for that location based on our traffic patterns. We happen to be busiest during the winter. I have never not gotten a parking spot in that parking lot in my life unless there was a funeral. Any day of the year. So I defy any of you to tell me I'm wrong on that because I'm not. We're not there on the weekends. We're not there on Saturday or Sunday. We do our busiest, busiest time is from, you know, 10 to noon, Tuesdays and Thursdays. It happens to be the least traffic dense time of the day, Monday through Friday. The summer months are our light time. The winter months, we service more people. So we are perfect in that regard. I also want to say something, you know, I've heard a lot of very nice people. And I know the people that are opposed to our being there are also good people. I don't want to imply that you're not. But I've heard a lot of people saying how much they love Heart of the Hamptons, but they just want us to be somewhere else. And you have to appreciate how hard it has been for the last two or three years for us to find a location. By the grace of God and the grace of the village, we did find one. I defy you to find any street in the village that people aren't, you know, complaining about traffic, including Hill Street, for God's sakes. And, you know, I just, you, you're pushing us into a corner. You all say you love us and you want us to be around, you just don't want us to be around you. I don't know, I don't know what to, to say to that. There's an old adage that, and I'm not sure exactly how it goes, but I'll, I'll get it pretty right, that for evil to win, good people need only do nothing. Well, for kindness to win, good people need to stand up and do something. It takes more effort for kindness to win. And we are doing that on a daily basis. And by you pushing us off that street to somebody else's street, only to go through a three-year process with those people is maddening. And it's shameful. You know, if, if any of you, I'd ever seen any of you at Heart of the Hamptons in our, in our building while we're operating, I could understand. But for those of you that have implied that you, you know, you've looked for other spaces, you've hired at your own expense, you've never asked us once what we needed. How could you possibly know what we need when you never even called us? So I've had enough. I applaud you for taking a chance on us. I have promised you on my life that I will not embarrass you. And when I'm gone, Heart of the Hamptons is a type of organization that the future people that run it only have kindness in their heart. We're not looking to make our neighbors, you know, upset. I defy anybody to find somebody on Hill Street in the last 30 years that has complained about our existence. I don't care how wide the road is. I grew up on Hill Street. I know exactly the way to it. It's, it's a two-way road, just like Meeting House. So I'm sorry, I'm very emotional, but I've heard enough.
Jimmy Farland?
Tough attack to follow. Tough. I'm sort of the leader of the people who believe that Meeting House Lane is not the best location for the food pantry. I hate to repeat this. And Mr. McFarlane, we all want to spell our names the same, basically expressed exactly the way I feel about it. I really don't want to repeat all that. As did Judy Johnson declared exactly what the situation is. I, I don't know how hard you've looked and I, I can't extemporaneously go on about that. But there are four places here that are almost like created Masker Schneider, we say in German, tailored for the spot. One is the old nursery school on Major's Path that the school board is holding because they store crap in it. There's the Brokowski Ice Factory on David Wyatt's Lane. There's the former village maintenance barn on Flying Point Road that used to have Kenny Zay's vehicle maintenance facility in it. And I was responsible for giving Kenny Zay a big building on Willow Street. And that building has only got junked in since then. And then, last week, the school board decided that we are going to buy them a new office building on Hampton Road. That building is, in my opinion, gigantic. And if the Heart of the Hamptons can't have the back section of that building, I would like to know why we're gonna allow the school board to buy it with our money. Now, if you really have put a full-court press on, on the school board or the village to give you the village barn and, and they won't do it, then I'll stand up and work for you to get the best spot you can out of that little bitty sliver of a lot. I don't know how the hell we're gonna do it, but we can do it. But we also have to figure that our, your desires are gonna have to be modest so we can ameliorate any negative effect that this facility on Meeting House Lane might have. And that's about all I can say about it. I have a lot more to say, but it's been covered by everybody 10 times over.
Thank you. Father Patrick?
Nick Epple, 50 now in court. I've been on the board for six years for the Hamptons and president there the last three. We've looked. Three years, six years we've been looking. And I stand here today to thank you. Thank you to the village board for being there for us because it's a necessity. I'm a third grade teacher in the school district. Grown up here my whole life, lived here, 30-plus years in the village. It's neat. I, I teach elementary school students. We're a big help with the elementary school. And it's a necessity. And the Catholic Church has been nothing but great in the last 30 years, but they're growing as well. And that's why it's a necessity to, to leave. We've tried. And Mr. McFarlane, you have always, you've set forward different options up here. I would love to show you around. I mean, for you to speak about where we should go without ever coming and looking at our operation. I mean, I would love to meet with you and talk with you and answer any questions when you come to see our operation before you make any suggestions about the school or other buildings like that. Because this building, it fits our needs. It does. And like I said, it's a necessity. Molly, Sean, everyone who's spoken tonight on behalf, we're very flexible. I am here to listen. My email is nick@heartofthehamptons.org. You can email me any questions, any concerns. I'm here to listen on behalf of the board. That is my job. I can show you around with Molly, show you our operation before you can make public comments about what we should do. We, we can work together. We're not attached to a certain window or a certain structure. We can be flexible with that. We don't need, you know, I think our building that we're, we're planning, it's, it's there just to fit our needs. We just want to get in and we want to help people and get out. So I, I'm asking you, please send me an email. I can give you my private phone number after this meeting. I'd love to talk to you, to communicate with everybody that has a concern. And we're here to, to answer any questions. And we want to be good neighbors. We're here for this community. We're here for people of this community. We're here for everybody. And I, I know that it's gonna work. I know it is. So please, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to reach out to us and to have a, have a conversation. Okay? And thank you so much for your time and everything.
Thank you.
Cat, I think we have some people on Zoom. I have Kimberly Allen and Steve, Leslie Sties.
Kimberly Allen, Pedro Riley.
Pedro Riley's there.
Benji, so I'll just, just in case there were any questions.
So you can ask if Kimberly Allen left.
Okay. Any members on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand so we can bring you in. This is regarding Heart of the Hamptons.
Does Ms. Allen want to speak on this topic?
Put her hand up.
Then we blank. You can go after her.
Can I put door noises up there?
Yes.
Hey, Kimberly.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, board. Good, good evening, all the individuals who came today. I know we all know each other well. Sean, I saw you a few days ago and you were so sweet to come up to me and say hi. And Mackie, you and I were just speaking about a topic at the last public hearing. So I think what I'm hearing is that we have a number of people in this room who have some very good intentions, but there may be some lack of information or information gaps. Not on anyone's fault, I don't think, for the folks living on Meeting House Lane or for the folks at Heart of the Hamptons. But I think it would be very helpful to have an open discussion. So a lot of these open issues could be raised without making people feel bad on either side. And I have to tell you, when I saw the traffic study, it worried me that we would, you know, depend on a traffic study that was done two days in the dead of winter during COVID when nobody was going to school and fewer people were going to work. Everyone was, many people were working from home and people were afraid to go out. That, to me, doesn't sound like a really good study. And maybe there was a reason behind it. I think there are a lot of questions that people have and because they don't have an avenue to hear where this thinking is coming from, I, I think it's raising a lot of concern, stress, and agita, quite frankly. And the people who live on Meeting House Lane, morning, noon, and night, as I did, you know, we experienced a lot of traffic. And it is an emergency route to the hospital. There are a lot of issues. And quite frankly, there's a lot of issues. We could be rowing in the same direction and helping you fundraise, but we really don't understand what, what you've looked at. And we don't really understand why this building has to be as big as it needs to be if your, if your client base isn't really that large. So I think there's a lot of information out there. Maybe it's misinformation. I don't know how to close the gap. I don't think anybody is, is, you know, trying to, has anything but good intentions. But, you know, the people in Meeting House Lane, they feel like they've been mowed over and you probably feel like you're being blocked and not listened to. Those are both fair feelings to have. But I, it worries me that people will just barrel through this and grant a permit. And for many of us, we don't understand what's going on. So I thank everybody for being here tonight. I think there's more good in this world and, and good intention than unintentional harm. And I hope we can figure it out.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Wayne? Mr. Brett Schneider, 57 Lewis?
Good night. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wayne Brett Schneider. I'm on Lewis Street, which, if you want to talk about a street that has problems, I'm on the ambulance street. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We live in this village. I'm so lost for words right now. I came up here expecting to be very angry. And I really see the light in front of us. I think that what's been said by Mr. Epple and Mr. McFarlane, I think we're gonna come together. I think everybody realizes that we can't keep fighting with each other. Let's get together. Please take his number. Please call him and let's work this out. There's no reason that we have to be against the Heart of the Hamptons. Everybody is for it. We know what they're doing. We know that the church is not against their being there. The church just needs the space. It has nothing to do with the church wanting them to leave. It has to do with Heart of the Hamptons just found a great location. They're not putting in a three-story building there. They're not gonna bring, their traffic is during the winter. That's why the traffic study was done during the winter. You don't do a traffic study during the summer, there's no traffic at Heart of the Hamptons during the summer. Everybody's at the beach. Even the homeless is sleeping at the beach. I don't have anything else to say. Just let's get together. I'm walking out of here tonight and I'm not upset with Mr. McFarlane. That's a miracle in itself.
All right, I think that's right. I think that's all we have tonight. I think that's a good note to end on. Uh, so I'll make a motion to, uh, close the.
This issue has been going on for my entire tenure on the board, the last almost two years. And probably even part of that. A lot of people on both sides, I've talked to all of you, at least some of you on both sides of this issue very passionately. You all have your perspectives and rightfully so. That being said, I do think there is some light. That being said, I do think, there is, like, at the end of the term, as Wayne mentioned, I do think if we can have both of the councils for Harderhamptons and the neighbors talk within the next two weeks, I would like, I would like a condition to be made to have any issues that both councils can agree upon, that we can also agree upon, to have this process move forward. Because we are moving in the right direction. However, we have to, we have to find a solution. You know, Sean, you mentioned you're tired. I'm tired of listening to this. You know, unfortunately, this process was partially politicized by allowing this board to obtain, to allow the special permit. It should really have stayed with the zoning board. But we, but it is up to us to have that authority. So I implore both of the attorneys to come together to find compromise because we're almost there. And I would like to make a condition of this permit to have those conditions agreed upon by both parties to be put into the, into our resolution. So I don't know if we can, if you want to table this until next meeting or, because I do think that the two attorneys should meet before we take action.
Ken, I don't, I don't think, Ken, I don't know if you can hear us. Can you jump in? Or I don't, I don't think that we could make any conditions depending on a special exception.
Well, I mean, the way the local law is written, the conditions that are required to be met are already laid out in the local law. In the granting of a special exception use, the board of trustees can certainly impose any reasonable conditions that they find necessary. But as stated earlier in the meeting, this is going to go to the planning board for site plan review, and they certainly can impose whatever reasonable, relevant conditions that they impose. I'm not sure if, I'm always in favor of conversations and discussions between the parties that have different positions. But I don't know if that's necessarily going to happen. So we heard a lot tonight. We heard a lot of different positions. I'm just not sure what the board wants to do, if they want to move forward. But conditioning it, any approval based upon an agreement between opposing council, that's just not feasible. It's either the board imposes, you know, a reasonable condition, or they don't. And I don't think you can approve something subject to approval by other parties in the future, because we don't know what they may or may not be.
Thank you, Ken. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. And.
Mr. Mayor, I say, I'm going to say close. I have this. I don't think it's fundamentally fair that we've closed the hearing in light of the applications, presentation of traffic studies, for example. And I think the public needs to understand, we have retained a traffic engineer. The public needs to understand, and I think the board needs to understand, from a clinical point of view, from a unbiased point of view, what are the traffic impacts? And how they can be compared relative to other, to the application of conditions for this site, as well as consideration of alternatives in lieu of this application being granted. But to close the public hearing, when frankly, many members of the public were only limited to three minutes, I'm quite optimistic that the board heard ample words from, in favor of the application in the past, and as of now. And to close the hearing now, I just, I think is wrong.
I appreciate the comments. I'm going to move forward with the motion to close. But I would urge you, Chapter 116- dash, the local code site plan review clearly specifies that you can argue, have the right to argue traffic in front of the planning board, and you'll have ample opportunity to compare and contrast parking and traffic studies. And that is the perfect opportunity to which to do so.
Shouldn't we make this resolution, condition upon the public?
Trust me, McFarland, I do think it is time to close the public hearing and to move on, as Mr. Brett Schneider said.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, so we'll keep on moving on tonight. We have a third public hearing. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding Local Law 7-2022, the proposal to amend Chapter 116, specifically Section 116-38 entitled Site Plan Review. And with, and thank you very much, everyone, for coming out tonight. It's been a long night. I will actually let John Ellsworth come back in.
Thanks, John Ellsworth, back in.
I opened the hearing, so we should have taken it right.
Mr. Ellsworth, are you on it?
Yes, I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so this is the final public hearing. Good luck and everyone. I'm glad to see that. This is the final public hearing in its regard to Chapter 116- dash, the Site Plan Review, which we actually were just referring to. And the genesis of this public hearing is that this administration, and as life, is interested in making the lives of our businesses easier. And I'd like to refer to one of the first things I did in 2019, which was to actually take the signs out of the A or B and fast-track signs that businesses can get open sooner. I was just talking to one of the local business owners today, who was very happy about her outdoor dining. And so we like to do things that are supportive of our business community. So we realized that this Chapter 116 specifies that a lot of businesses and other entities would have to actually go for site plan review in front of the planning board. And we actually want to make it easier for businesses. So we reached out to Nelson Pope Voorhees, who's our engineer and planner, and we asked them to analyze this chapter and to get back to us, and then to oppose an amendment to this local law so that not all entities have to go in front of the planning board for site plan review. So I would refer this over to NPV, and I'll let you guys take it from here.
Okay, so, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, so the matter that's before the board for the third hearing here is a revision to the Site Plan Review section of the code. Currently, the interpretation is that every, pretty much every matter that requires a building permit has to go to the planning board for site plan review. So what we did was, we went through the code and identified those uses that involve more of a potential impact and filtered out those uses that really don't, are not likely to involve an impact. So the ones that are potentially impactful, we're recommending that the referral to the planning board for site plan review continue so that you have that extra layer of review. And then for, for lack of a better term, lesser applications that are more administrative, they would go directly for a building permit and not have to go through the site plan review process. So we went use by use to come up with what's identified in this code as still requiring site plan review for the, by the planning board. So it's a one, essentially a one-page revision to the code, identifying those uses that would still require site plan. I don't know if there are, if there are any questions, specific questions about what's being proposed.
No, if I can speak, I would just like to say that having been on the planning board for a number of years and served as its chairman for many years, a lot of the uses and change you have incorporated into this modification were de facto issues that were not brought before the board during my time there because it was more or less generally understood that that any of those issues would be, there would be no grounds for the board to disapprove the modifications that had been suggested in the applications that were involved with the uses that you specify. So I think it's incumbent upon the board of trustees to relieve the pressure on the planning board to have to basically try to educate issues that, for all intents and purposes, there would be no reason for them to disapprove. So I think the modification is a very strong one, and one that we should do immediately to relieve the pressure on the business community, especially as we move into our busy business season coming up in the next, almost imminently. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Trustee Stevenson. I just wanted to see if there's any comments from board members, and then we'll open this up to comments to the public. Okay.
No, I'm good.
Are there any comments from the public? I figured Alan, he'd be here.
I think you were the first one that came here for it.
I'll never come again. As Roy's assistant for a while, because Martin Hamer got so old. I know a little bit about it.
A little labyrinth in the microphone.
I know a little bit about it. I haven't read the events. I understand in a sense of which way they're going, which is important, to take a jewelry shop that's going to become a ladies' dress shop and have to approve where the dressing rooms go or something, and have it go for hearings and all that sort of stuff in front of the planning board means that no one will be foolish enough to serve on that board again. And if this cleans it up, I'm told that if you study the history of major states, including New York and Pennsylvania and stuff, this happens when new council to the trustees make an interpretation of the law we've used for forty years and say, God, you can read it under Dylan's rule, or whatever, is this way instead of the way you've been doing it. It suddenly grows on you. So this is a retreat from an interpretation. It's probably a very sensible thing to do. So I just wanted to give you that background. The people presently on the planning board will rejoice in this. I think we've got four applications that have come in in the last two weeks to deal with, you know, men's dresses versus ladies' garments or something. And that's not what the planning board is supposed to be doing. So I thank you. It was a public comment. You're pushing us in the right direction.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Christine Sullivan-Wicker. I have no legal background, so I have a copy of this. I'm just questioning, I just have a question. It says the following may not be subject to site plan review discretion of the Village Building Inspector. I'm wondering what this, so it may be required by any change to one permitted use to another permitted use as listed in the Village of Southampton zoning code table of use regulations where the proposed use does not increase the capacity or intensity of the use does not have a parking space requirement greater than the current car for existing use based on Village parking plans. You know, anyway, the point is, what if, how do you, where does restaurants that turn into nightclubs fall in that? Would they need to be, are they exempt from site plan review?
I don't, they would not be, but I'll turn that over either to NPV or Alex Wallach, who is our newly hired planner. That's right. This is exactly why we, NPV did it that way.
Like you mentioned.
What's that?
Noise.
Noise, exactly. So maybe is Alex here or NPV? Okay. That's a great question. Thank you.
Well, there, one of the provisions is that it would go to the planning board automatically if it's a special exception use. So I don't know if the use, I had a little trouble hearing it, the speaker. But if that use is a special exception use, it would have to go through site plan review, through the planning board.
Restaurant to nightclub.
I don't think he heard you.
I don't, can you hear me now?
I lost the sound.
Okay.
In other words, if something's a permitted use, but it's expanded, you understand.
Yes, I can answer the question. I was hoping the planner would do it. But if it's a permitted use, and if it's expanded, and if it's a permitted use to a different permitted use, then it would still be subject to site plan review. So for example, if a restaurant became a nightclub, that would still be subject to site plan review, which is why NPV proposed it the way they did. And I know people would definitely want to go to site plan review for nightclubs in Southampton Village. I can tell you that. Okay. All right. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, that one felt pretty good. All right, I'll make a motion to close public hearing number three regarding Local Law 7-2022, the proposal to amend Chapter 116 zoning, specifically Section 116-38 entitled Site Plan Review. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, second from Trustee Stevenson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll continue to move on. Charlie, I'll let you take care of the resolutions. But clearly, the first resolution, we will need to table and potentially, I know that's my three minutes. So I'll just give it to you. But I think we have to table and potentially re-notice number one.
Okay, so motion to table Resolution Number One, which would be adopting Local Law 5-28. Mayor?
Motion to table.
I'll make the one. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution Number Two, resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves the receipt of an application submitted by Harderhamptons and grants a special exception.
I've lost sound again.
Yeah.
I've lost, I've lost sound as well. Hello, Kat, can you hear me? We can't hear the board.
If you're watching.
Can't hear the room.
Brand new. If you're watching, man, keep clicking on USB. You might have a little sound right now. Can you hear me?
Okay.
I've got no sound.
Okay. Let's do the.
Resolution, so Resolution, Resolution Number Two, resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves the receipt of an application submitted by Harderhamptons and grants a special exception use. Is there a motion?
Sorry, we can't, I can't, it's been on here.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Not that kind of night.
Can you hear me now?
Uh-uh.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Ken, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Resolution Number Two, resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves the receipt of an application submitted by Harderhamptons and grants a special exception use. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Hold on, before you pass that motion, I just want to add in that the board determines that this is a type-two action as per the recommendation of Nelson Pope Voorhees.
Ken, would you mind just redrafting that resolution for us?
So the resolution will be amended to read, "Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves the receipt of an application submitted by Harderhamptons and grants a special exception use." And be further resolved that the Board of Trustees has determined that this is a type-two secret action.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
On the amended resolution, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Resolution Number Three, resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves Local Law 7-2022, the proposed.
Village of Southampton hereby approves Local Law 7-2022, the proposed, the proposal to amend Village Code, Chapter 116 zoning, specifically Section 116-38 entitled Site Plan Review. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
Motion, second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you. Can you guys hear me now, or should we pass the microphone over?
Ken said they could hear.
All right, I'll keep on going here. Try to talk a little, so there's a few things we, we actually need to do before the meeting ends. The first thing is, and this is up to, we could use some, some guidance, there's a rental registry law that we actually need to notice out for the April 12th meeting. And I'll just say a few comments on that. There is a state law that was passed in 2019 to the protection of tenants, and that would require that you can only collect one month rent upfront. You cannot collect your entire rent upfront. So if you're a Southampton Village homeowner, and you like to rent your home from Memorial Day to Labor Day, under this new state law, you can only collect your rent upfront one month at a time. However, Assemblyperson Fred Thiel and State Senator Kavanaugh passed another law saying that you can collect your rent upfront for a seasonal dwelling, so long as the municipality has a rental registry. So what we're going to do when we notice this out, just so the public knows, is that we're going to create a rental registry. But we spoke about this as a board, and our job here is to create the rental registry and make it as seamless and efficient as possible. We do not want our, we want to keep our village residents in the honor system. We do not want our building inspector looking at people's rental home unless there's a complaint. We do not want to burden them with submissions of floor plans. Our goal is to make this seamless and easy, because people need to obviously get their, get, get their participation into this rental registry. This is a lot different than what the town does. The town has an entire rental permit program. It's actually very heavy-handed. They require inspections, they require numerous paperwork, including floor plans. Their law is about 19 pages long. So the law that we're going to notice out to the public is about two to two and a half pages. It's much more simple, and we just want to make sure that our village residents have the opportunity to get into compliance with, with the state law, so that they can collect their rent upfront, because for a lot of residents here, this is a, a large source of income, a lot of the source of livelihood, and we just want to make this as easy for our residents. So that's the explanation here. But perhaps, Ken, you could help us with the, the resolution, and which, as far as the notice and the date, I think the date could be our April 12th meeting. I don't know if you heard me there, but do we have some language for noticing out a, a hearing?
Ken, do we have a, do we have a section that we would be amending?
I, I'm sorry, the, I had circulated a draft of the local law, which I think was sent further amended recently over the weekend. So I, I'm not sure what your question is, Mr. Mayor.
So it's in good shape now, maybe, maybe, Charlie, can I, I'll just come over there with the microphone. I'm sorry, but very unusual here. Ken, law's in good shape, so we can actually notice that out, so we're just looking for your help to create a resolution, including the chapter of our, our code, or what that's going to entail as far as a notice for the press, so we can have our public hearing on the registry.
Okay, so, so you can, you can, if you want to add on to the agenda tonight, a resolution to set a public hearing for whatever date you find necessary to adopt a local law concerning summer, summer rental registry.
That's right. It's not going to be summer, it's going to be seasonal dwell, seasonal dwelling rental registry. But can you just create that language for us right now, so we can make a motion?
Motion to set a public hearing for whatever date you want, insert date, to consider the adoption of a local law concerning seasonal rental registry.
Would you be honest?
Okay, so we need a motion to add Resolution Number Four to the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution Number Four, resolve, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby notice a public hearing to consider adopting a local law to implement a seasonal dwelling rental law. Notice of public hearing to be held April 12, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
All right, and do we want to renotice the leaf blower, or do we want to leave this alone?
We're going to, we're going to need time.
We need time for that.
Okay, all right, so we'll leave that alone. So I'll actually make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I'm the second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.